The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. Please take your seats. Again, the School Board Work Session begins in one minute.
Good morning. I now call the October sixteenth, two thousand and twenty five Administrative Briefing and Work Session of the Marion County School Board to order at nine A.M. Please silence your electronic devices to avoid disturbing others. Mirroring and modeling how our students begin each day, I ask that you please pause us, pause with us for a moment of silence. Thank you. I'll now read our Board Commitment Statement. We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first. We will leave a legacy of success. I would now like to ask the Board Attorney to explain the rules for this public workshop. Good morning, Attorney Powers.
Good morning, and thank you. This work session is a public meeting as defined in Florida's Sunshine Law. The Board is dedicated to full transparency in its meetings and its work. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board has adopted uniformed meeting procedures, including the right for citizens to participate. The Board will allow public comment on any work session item listed on today's agenda at the appropriate time. Speakers must fill out a request form located in the lobby and hand it to the Board Clerk. After the Board and Superintendent have completed their discussion on a particular agenda item, the Board Clerk will call the speaker's name in the order received. Each speaker will have three minutes. As required by Sunshine Law, the Board must maintain orderly conduct and proper decorum throughout this meeting. Speakers may criticize subject matter and decisions in a respectful manner, but not people. Finally, speakers must be very careful not to violate the privacy rights of others, especially students and their family members, by mentioning names or other identifying information. Thank you for your attention to these important rules.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Good morning, Ms. Martinez Young. Can you please provide the proof of publication for today's meeting?
Good morning. The notice for the October sixteenth, two thousand and twenty five work session was published in the Ocala Gazette on October third, two thousand and twenty five. Proof of publication has been attached to Board Docs under Proof of Publication.
Oh, she's here. Thank you, Ms. Martinez Young. Okay, we're going to move into item four point one, Compliance Inspections Reports. Dr. Brewer, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good morning, Ms. Cynthia Barnes is here to provide the report for us.
Good morning, everyone. A quarterly safety compliance report. In accordance with House Bill fourteen seventy-three, each district safety specialist is required to share data from the compliance visits from the Florida Department of Education of Safe Schools. Specifically, the language in the bill states, "At least quarterly, the school safety specialist must report to the district school superintendent and the district school board any noncompliance by the school district with laws or rules regarding school safety." During the two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six school year, the first quarter for Marion County schools, we received zero office compliance visits from the Florida Department of Education Office of Safe Schools. Therefore, the schools inspected is zero, the percentage of schools inspected or re-inspected is zero, no school requirement deficiencies, because it was zero, of course, and once again, the percentage would be zero. However, in section one, zero zero one, point two one two, subsection thirteen, Florida statute also requires that annually, during the first quarter of every school year, the school safety specialist shall report to the school board in a public meeting the number of schools inspected during the preceding calendar year. Our results are as follows. The number of schools inspected by the Florida Department of Education Office of Safe Schools would have been twenty-nine. The percentage of schools inspected would have been fifty-two point seventy-two percent. The number of schools with no school safety requirement deficiencies would be thirteen. The percentage of inspected schools with no safety requirement deficiencies would be forty-four point eighty-two percent. Now, they did not capture any re-inspections, however, all the schools did receive re-inspections. That would have been a number of sixteen, and all sixteen of those schools, once they were re-inspected, were found to have no safety requirement deficiencies. After having said that, to conclude, I want to take the time to thank the school leaders, teachers, support staff, and parents for all working together on a daily basis to help keep our schools safe. It takes everyone making safety a daily priority to create a safe learning environment. Finally, I would like to let the community know how serious we, we take school safety. We embody one team, one mission. They are also part of we.
Thank you so much, Ms. Barnes. We appreciate the work that you and your team do to keep our schools safe each and every day, so thank you for being here this morning and sharing that report with us.
Thank you. You have a good day.
Is there any public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to our next item.
Thank you.
Five point one, Strategic Plan Update for Goal Four. Dr. Brewer.
Yes, ma'am. We have quite a few of our leaders here today that will present, but we will ask for Mr. White, Mr. Whitehouse will lead us in this, and then he will introduce the presenters.
Thank you, Dr. Brewer. Good morning, Chair Conrad, Board Members. I'll give it just a minute while we get our presentation pulled up, but we are here today to provide an update on Goal Four of the strategic plan. We have previously shared with the Board updates on Goals One, Two, and Three, and we'll have Goal Five coming up next month. Okay, I'll keep talking through them. So, as a part of the two thousand and twenty-six district strategic plan, we have five goals in place. Goal Four focuses on fiscal and operational efficiency. I have a team here with me this morning that will share updates on each of their areas. I'm filling in for Ms. Usher, who would normally be kicking this off for you, but certainly we all play a role in fiscal efficiency of our school system. So you'll note on the slide with the data that we have provided for you, updates on the outcome metrics that are included for Goal Four. As a reminder, this document is a living document, so you'll note that the first item on there, which is looking at network usage efficiency, is actually an updated item. Our previous outcome metric, which was making sure that we had one-to-one devices for all of our students at the district, was accomplished a couple of years ago, and so we have pivoted to make sure that we are continuing to move our district forward through technology, and Mr. Ben Menudie will share some updates about our progress with that. We also have our updates on there for our transportation. We have shown some improvement in the early A.M. arrivals. We've also seen some improvement in our P.M. arrivals on the outcome metrics. One more. Yes, sir. Thank you. So we are getting very close to our goal with our A.M., and certainly you all are getting those regular updates as we continue to problem solve around our transportation to make sure we can reach those goals, and Mr. Ostannik will be here to provide some updates on that. Our school lunch participation, we have actually already met the goal for the strategic plan, and we're excited to continue seeing growth in student participation and lunch participation, and Ms. Belcher is here to be able to provide some updates in that area. We are working through risk management to make sure that we are reducing the number of workplace injuries that are sustained from visitors and making sure that all of our facilities are up to date and in good working order. Mr. Duncan is going to be here to provide some updates on our facilities. And then finally, at the end, we have our ending fun balance, which as the Board is aware, we've had some struggles in the spring with trying to eliminate sixty-four million dollar shortfall in the budget, and so this one is still a work in progress, and our finance team will share some updates for what we're working on this year to try and reach that target. So this time, I will turn it over to Mr. Ben Menudie, who'll provide some updates for you on technology.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Technology and Information Services is committed to providing consistent, reliable access to digital learning resources for all students and staff. Currently, our network availability rate stands at ninety-nine point nine one eight. Our target is to reach ninety-nine point nine nine percent availability. This availability is often referred to as the five nines. The benchmark is extremely difficult to achieve, as it allows for only about five minutes of downtime per year compared to the nearly seven hours of downtime at our current level. Reaching this level of performance requires significant investment in modern infrastructure, redundancy, and proactive monitoring. To move closer to this goal, we're implementing a series of strategic upgrades and enhancements designed to strengthen our technology infrastructure and directly support teaching and learning. The strategic upgrades and enhancements include the following: network infrastructure upgrades. Currently, we're replacing all network switches at schools. Wireless access points have been replaced at the high school level, and middle and elementary schools are soon to follow once we have E-rate funding approval. These upgrades are essential to maintain reliable, high-speed connectivity for the more than sixty-three thousand devices used across the network daily. With a growing inventory of Chromebooks, desktops, and laptops that rely on the network, improving reliability and security is crucial to ensuring uninterrupted instruction. Our next enhancement is cybersecurity. To strengthen our digital security, the district is implementing multi-factor authentication to staff accounts, enhancing user access control within business systems, and conducting simulated phishing campaigns to raise cyber awareness. Each year, more than fifty thousand technology support tickets are generated, many tied to account access and authentication. These initiatives directly reduce risks while improving operational efficiency for staff and students. The software approval process is our next area of enforcement, or enhancement, I should say. We have established standardized operating procedures for evaluating and approving school-based software applications. With thousands of devices in classrooms and a wide range of instructional requests, a consistent and secure approval process ensures that applications are reliable, compatible, and aligned with district standards before deployment. Our next upgrade is digital classroom management software. One of our major initiatives is the implementation of our digital classroom management software. This tool enables teachers in grades six to twelve to manage student Chromebooks during the instructional time, while providing real-time oversight that strengthens classroom control and supports student engagement in digital learning environments. Professional learning and development is another major focus of the Technology and Information Services team. Professional learning is a cornerstone of our technology strategy. We're providing in-person, virtual, and on-demand training opportunities, including lead teacher cohorts. As new tools such as classroom management software are deployed, these programs ensure that staff have the knowledge and confidence to use technology effectively in the support of instruction. Finally, I want to make you aware of our device management and support. Device management represents one of our largest areas of responsibility for technology staff. The team supports more than sixty-seven thousand devices across the district, including fifty, almost fifty-two thousand Chromebooks, twenty-four hundred interactive flat panels, over four thousand four hundred teacher desktops, seven hundred, over seven hundred and eighteen teacher laptops, two thousand five hundred administrative desktops, and almost thirteen hundred administrative laptops, four thousand eight hundred thirty-eight student desktops, and five hundred and fifty-three student laptops. Each device requires imaging, configuration, maintenance, and ongoing support. In addition, more than fifty thousand support tickets are logged annually, with an average of three hundred and fifteen tickets solved a day. This workload highlights both the scale of our operations and the dedication of the district technology staff. In conclusion, these initiatives include monetizations of networks, enhanced security, streamlined approval, classroom technology, integration, professional development, and comprehensive device management share one purpose, and the one purpose is ensuring secure, reliable, and effective technology that supports teaching and learning across Marion County Public Schools. Okay, and I'll be followed by Mr. Ostannik with the transportation update.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Our goal with transportation is to provide reliable and safe bus transportation across Marion County. That, that's our ultimate goal, is to get our kids to school on time and get them there safely. I'd like to take this time, as we get started, to thank the Board for providing my team with the resources and support to meet our goals of providing that reliable and safe bus transportation. The Board has once again shown its commitment by approving the purchase of the eighteen buses on Tuesday night, and I'm very thankful for that. Now, as we get in and we start talking about how we meet our goals with our, we'll look at our on-time arrival percentages. This data was derived from our new routing software and tablets, which were installed this summer. As, as we look to improve and, and reset our goals, I'm going to talk a little bit about why we look to do that. If you look at the percentages here, we've made some pretty nice jumps over the exact same time period from a year ago, and if we would have put in two thousand and twenty-three, you would also see jumps that have been made in that realm. We currently are trying to achieve and maintain a ninety-five percent A.M. on-time arrival and an eighty percent P.M. on-time arrival. You'll notice in the A.M., we're making nice jumps, and the P.M., there is a little bit of lag, and I'll just talk about that for a little bit, because if, and I always like to look at the positives, but I seem to focus more on the, where we need to improve a lot of times, because that's, to me, that's where the work needs to be done. We've experienced that decline in the P.M., and some of the factors that have kind of got us in that point is we have a number of students with drop-off restrictions in the afternoons, and most of those kids are usually elementary kids. So if we get to a bus stop and there's no one there to receive that student, we have to either pull over, try to get a hold of a parent, and get that student dropped off, or take that student back to the school, which puts us behind for that second, third tier of the run. Other factors are P.M. call-outs, and a lot of our temp workers only work in the A.M., not the P.M., so that's why you see the numbers, the discrepancy there. And ultimately, as much as our new technology and everything that we have in place is really helping us improve our numbers, our backbone is the employees that work within our team. Now, if we look at this slide here, this, once again, is highlighting the A.M. on-time arrival, because I'm very proud of our team. When we look at these numbers, the percentage increases. I'm going to kind of highlight Zone Three, because they, they're almost a ten percent increase over last year, and when you look at Zone Three, they have, if you look in that outside column, they have seventy-eight buses, or seventy-eight routes, I should say, in Zone Three. That's eight more than our, our next zone, which would be Zone Four, seventy. Within Zone Three, they also have probably the, the toughest area to, to work with traffic and the, kind of the overcrowding. There's a reason that we're building so many schools in the southwest quarter, because it's such a highly populated area. Well, when you try to drive in a highly populated area, you know, we, you kind of run into some issues with traffic sometimes, and if you've been down that way in the southwest area, I think we've all seen that. So just, I give everybody else a kind of a chance to look at those numbers, but those increases, obviously, if you're doing well, it's harder to increase the number. You look at Zone Two, they had a really successful year last year, so their number is, is a little smaller, but the number's going to be smaller when we have less area for, for growth. I mentioned a few minutes ago, for us to really be excellent within the transportation department, all the tools in the world are, are needed and are great, and they help us, but the, the number one tool we have and the backbone of our department is our employees and our team within, within the department. And without them, we're not going to be successful. So when you look at our, our driver percentage for being at work on September fifteenth this year, at that point, we were averaging ninety-seven percent attendance, which is very well, you know, that's very good. But they're also, you know, that's without including some of the F.M.L.A., and when folks are out, or if there's a, a worker's comp issue where someone's on light duty. So those, those are the numbers that we're, we kind of, causes us to have to try, try to make up some, some open routes and, and fill those areas. So our department, our depart, excuse me, our departmental efficiency is directly correlated, obviously, with our employee attendance, and, and that's what these numbers are kind of looking at here. Our numbers are going up when our, when everyone is, is at work, and if we have less folks at work, our numbers kind of lag a little bit on those days. The technology upgrades that we have here, as far as the traversal routing software, the maximizing our fleet usage by, by increasing the number of buses that we purchase, that way we, we can keep more buses on the road, because they're newer and they don't break down as much, so they're not, we're not having as much downtime. The live view cameras and the tablets, that tech, those technology upgrades have made possible through the Board's commitment and the collaboration of several departments, including Safe Schools, our legal department, transportation, and the finance department, to allow us to increase these numbers, and I think that's why we're seeing these numbers increase and, and look better, especially in the A.M. arrivals. The technology upgrades increase our efficiency, and they help keep our students and employees safe. We have several examples of that. I'll just provide one. We had an incident this morning where the, a bus had, they weren't in an accident, but they were right there to stop because of the accident. They were able to hit the red button to get with nine-one-one, and we were also able to live view the bus so we could make sure the kids were okay, even though they weren't involved in the accident, they had to witness something that, that happened, so they're able to live view at that point and see what, what's going on, or from the office, as we send staff there to assist and get another bus there to get the students, because they couldn't pass through the area. So those are just a few, a few of the examples. There is one quote that's on here, I'd kind of like to read, and this is directly from one of our drivers, Ms. Iris McCoy in Zone One. It says, "The tablet has been a great help. It makes navigating much easier, especially when I'm covering someone else's route and don't have their paper directions. I really appreciate how the student names pop up at each stop. It speeds up the loading process. It means I'm not holding up traffic while flipping through paperwork. It's made my day-to-day smoother and more efficient. Definitely a win in my book." So, and I think we see that across the Board. If we can be more efficient, our, our drivers can be more comfortable, and it's just going to make the entire process better. Thank you. Now, I'm going to introduce Ms. Yvonne Boombach, Director of Facilities.
Mr. Ostannik, would you may mind holding on for just a second? I think we have a few comments or maybe a question or two.
I'd love to say.
We can wait till the end if we want, but I just, I.
I think it flows better to, to let, while that person's presenting, go ahead and ask the question.
Yeah, sure. And I don't really have questions as much as, I guess maybe one of them's a question, but you mentioned, like, temp workers who only work one part of the shift, and this may be part of the union contract, which would be beyond this conversation, but are we able to hire just a part-time driver that can drive mornings or afternoons? Because that split schedule is a challenge for some people, and so is there a way you could just be a bus driver in the afternoon?
Yes, ma'am. We have, we have, I believe, ten available temporary bus driver positions. Right now, I think six of those are filled, and those drivers, they may only be able to work Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or they may only be able to work A.M., or they may only be able to work P.M., or maybe their shift changes, but they're on, you know, they're on and work with us. We currently have that. It's just, sometimes trying to get those, get those filled is not the easiest thing. I do know that we have one more that I believe will start next week, that's working with training right now.
Okay. It's not lost on me that we approve a staffing plan, but I didn't, I don't, I didn't know that, so that was something I learned today, so certainly something I can share in the community as I, I have conversations. You were talking about the age restrictions for dropping off children. What, what is that age? Is there an age restriction for that elementary drop-off? If you said it, I missed it.
They, if, if they're a VPK student that's, that rides, so they're, they have an IEP, there, there's, they have to have a drop-off restriction. A lot of our, say, Hillcrest students have drop-off restrictions. There's a lot of students that ride just from other schools that are, that are older, but for whatever reason, they have a drop-off restriction. And then for us, we don't drop kindergartners off without a parent being there, unless a parent tells us that, you know, we're, they can be dropped off. There's not a restriction on kindergarten, but we kind of place that on there.
So what is the, what is the, I'm trying to find the most appropriate word. Where is the accountability for the adult who's on the receiving end of the child if they fail to promptly be at the bus stop on a regular occurrence? What does that look like?
We try to call and, and see what's going on, but if it's a regular occurrence, we work with the school, and we work with the parent, and they can be removed off of the bus.
Okay.
If, if they're not there. It's just, it's one of those things, a lot of times, it's, it's sporadic, so tracking it sometimes can be a little bit of an issue.
Understood. Okay, thank you for explaining that. And then, just as an afterthought for after today's meeting, and this, I think, is partly just of my awareness, because we get your transportation report, which is very detailed, but it does indicate how many of your employees are out on F.M.L.A. I know Ms. Marant's not here today, but one question I would have is, is the percentage of employees out for workman's comp or F.M.L.A. statistically similar to the other departments that we have throughout Marion County Public Schools? I'm only obviously privy to this amount, because you share it so regularly, but it does seem high, but maybe it's not high, maybe it's pretty in line with the rest of the departments, but just as an afterthought, and this is totally not for you, but if someone from Risk or H.R. would share that, I would just wonder, because if it is, if transportation is higher, I'm just wondering if there are problem-solving things we could work through to try to come up with some solutions to minimize, you know, those barriers. So that was the only questions I had.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you, Dr. James. Any other questions or comments at this time on Transportation Board? Yep, Mr. Brewer.
I always want to say thank you, because it is a tough beast to wrangle, this transportation, and it is so integral to our success. The on-time drop-off in the afternoons, you know, I'm not sure what stones are left to unturn, but. unturn, but we just have to keep thinking it through and problem-solving, and, you know, even if someone is on intermittent FMLA, as opposed to full FMLA, you know, working with each employee as individuals to try to accommodate them as best we can and support them as best we can, so that they can work when they can. And there's so many components that go into it. I guess another opportunity may be, you know, what can we do to incentivize the temporary folks to work in the PM? You know, a lot of people that are retired, it's like, okay, sure, I'm up in the morning anyway, I'll go ahead and do a couple runs, but then the rest of my day, I want my day, you know, to do what I want to do. So, so I see it from all sides, but whatever we can do creatively, that can be brought to us, as a school board that's within the union contract and all of the other guidelines that we have to live by. And I don't know if there are any other incentives that we can think about that would help encourage retired employees to come back and do some PM runs, you know, for us. Sometimes those doubling up on a run is, it's great for the driver, because they get overtime, but it doesn't help the cause of the, of our on-time, you know, issue. So I realize, at a pretty good level, how involved this all is, but please continue to bring, you know, the ideas, and if we can make them happen, this board is committed to doing that, I know.
I thought of something else, Chair. I don't know, have we spent any time connecting with some of the plants like FedEx and Amazon and Chewy who do shift work, potentially individuals who work like a third shift, so they don't go in until the evening time, and they would have availability that's not in the morning when they would be sleeping, but it is ahead of their schedule? I wouldn't see us as a competitor, because they obviously pay more than we do, but this is an opportunity for one of their employees to then come and just pick up a couple hours a day for us, and I don't know if we're reaching out to them, if they'd even be interested, but maybe, I mean, I know in today's economy, a lot of people are looking for extra opportunities for employment, and those drivers all have CDLs, so just a thought that popped into my head is us to connect, maybe we could work through the chamber or something to create some connections there, and see if they'd want to come in and just give us three or four hours in the afternoon ahead of their night shift to pick up some extra hours.
Yes, ma'am, and there are some things in it works. I know one of the things that you guys passed on Tuesday was with School District Services, they have some drivers that we're going to use, that we're hoping, I was emailing with Mr. Lucky yesterday, but hopefully get those drivers in on Friday to do the training we need to do with them, so we can get them on a bus, and they was, they're going to start, there's, it's only going to be a few to start with, that he has available, but one's better than none, right? And get them on an open route to try to help us fill some of those. So there's some things in place. I know Reverend Cummings last year mentioned about working with the prison and seeing if maybe the guards, when they got off shift, one of the things I've thought about doing is reaching out to, because sometimes it's harder when you shift work every day, but if you shift work 24 hours on, 48 off, or something like they do with the Fire Department, maybe there's some firefighters that may like to come in and do some temporary driving type of thing. So there's some outreach, you know, out-of-the-box thinking that we're looking at to see what we can do to try to help. You know, we just, we just have to, we can't think within the parameters that we've always thought, right? We have to come up with other ideas.
Yep, and I would just say, if there's any, if any of us can help connect with, as the different roles we represent, connect our organization with other organizations to try to, like, just create a bridge and a pathway, please just let us know, because that's, I want to see us figure out how to solve this problem as many ways as possible.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Mr. Ostonak, I just want to say thank you for your leadership. You're always thinking out of the side of the box and bringing ideas to us, and, you know, share the same mission and same goal we do with, as you do, and so just thank you for your continued work. You know, I know you're working 24/7, there's always something going on with transportation, so thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Now, Ms. Yvonne Boomback's going to come up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Board members, Dr. Brewer. I'm here to present the Priority Strategy C, and this is to ensure that our facilities are healthy and safe physical environments for working and learning. Our Facilities Department, the Maintenance Department, custodial staff, they work every day to provide the best environment for students, staff, and the public. We are proud to share that all key activities that we had in the past years have been met. Some of them include that work order software we had, we installed the UVC lights and all the HVAC equipment to enhance the air quality, and we are working with a firm, Ross EMs, for our facilities assessment data bank I presented in the last update. There's lots of information that goes into that data bank. We're meeting quite often to dig even deeper and to get as much information into that data bank as we can. Hopefully, we are finishing up shortly, and then we can use this comprehensive assessment to allow us to better prioritize our projects, to hopefully minimize emergency situations going forward. And that's all the update I have.
Okay. Any comments, questions? Okay, thank you, Ms. Boomback.
I was just going to give one compliment.
Okay, start.
I, it is not lost on me how you all, essentially, Mr. Duncan, yourself, lots of members of the facilities team are working essentially 24/7. I mean, we receive text messages in the middle of the night, and early in the morning, the Fesden situation, obviously, was a very early morning, and so I just wanted to make sure that recognition was given publicly to, and acknowledgement to just how much you all are available to address issues, facility issues, that directly impact student learning, and some of them are health and safety-related, where we have to address it before students arrive on campus, or we have to come up with an alternative plan. And the foundational knowledge you have about MCPS in your brains and just the ability, I mean, Mr. Duncan, I feel like, has a map of every school in his head at some point, and so just the ability to really think through to impact, what is this going to look like? How can we solve the problem and be solution-oriented, is a huge benefit to the district, and I just wanted to publicly acknowledge that.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Duncan is always there for all of us to, like, facilities couldn't do the work without the Maintenance Department and his leadership. They are, they are the boots on the ground, and they know the facilities inside out, and without their cooperation, we wouldn't be in such good shape.
Thank you, Ms. Boomback. Ms. Row.
I'll just say I concur. It doesn't go unnoticed, it doesn't go unappreciated, and you guys are linchpins in everything that we do, so thank you so much, and it's really been quite a few years, you know, that we've had, you know, with building schools again for the first time, and just trying to maintain what we have and keeping it all together, so incredible department, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boomback.
Thank you, and I will introduce Ms. Ramona Belcher. She will update you on Strategy Number D.
Good morning, Board members and Interim Superintendent. Outcome metrics for Goal 4D reflect a notable rise in lunch participation, so I'm pleased to report that Food and Nutrition Services has exceeded our goal, achieving 82% of participation in lunch, including breakfast, lunch, snacks, and supper meals combined. We served a total of 9.8 million meals last year, highlighting our commitment to providing nutritious meals for our students. Food and Nutrition Services promotes healthy eating through various marketing channels, including peach jar flyers, our Facebook marketing, seasonal promotions. In case you're not aware, it's National School Lunch Week this week, and we have items on the menu from around the world, so our students can experience new and different foods from other countries. We also participate in the Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Program, and our newest initiative is Farm Fresh Friday. Farm Fresh Friday introduces students to fruits and vegetables, featuring a new item each month, accompanied by signage to enhance the experience. These items have included butternut squash, cabbage, honeybell oranges, strawberries, sugar snap peas, blueberries, and corn on the cob. Some items are very popular, sugar snap peas, not so much. We don't know until we put that out there, right? We aim to engage our students in making healthy choices through our partnerships with fans programs, our local farms, as well as our Farm-to-School initiatives, demonstrating our commitment to providing locally sourced produce while actively engaging with our students. Additionally, our taste testing events have been a success. These events have allowed students, have allowed us to introduce new favorites to students that resonate with them. One standout is chicken wings on Wing It Wednesday, where students can customize with a variety of sauces. This is at the Middleland High School. Beyond wings, our evolving menu includes a range of new dishes, such as Asian noodle bowls, chicken and cheese empanadas, our pork mac and cheese, lovingly dubbed as piggy mac. We also added chicken cavatapi, fresh mandarin oranges, and garlic pizza topped with dill pickles. Each one of these additions brings its own unique flavors and variety to the menu. Last year, we were excited that our Farm-to-School program received its first major harvest from Amberbrook Farms in Eustis, Florida, which provided fresh corn on the cob to the students. On that day, over 8,000 servings of corn on the cob were enjoyed. We just recently brought in last week zucchini from GP Farms in Hawthorne. While exploring ways to expand our Farm-to-School program, we recently held a successful cultivating connections meeting with our local farmers to highlight advantages of providing locally sourced products to Marion County Public Schools. We are bringing on more farms and dedicated to offering a diverse range of fresh flavors, and we continue to strengthen this. We look forward to fostering these valuable connections that benefit the students and our community. On November 6th, at the Work Board Session, I will be giving a presentation on our Farm-to-School updates and our progress and our initiatives, so I do look forward to that conversation. Thank you. Up next is Mr. Rioswells, if you don't have any questions.
Yes, Dr. Brewer.
I'd like to comment. I went to three schools yesterday to see, to celebrate School Lunch Week, and it was so adorable. The students were very excited about yesterday being Japan, and yesterday's day was Japan, the day before was China, and today they have, they're celebrating UK, I think they're doing fish and chips today.
The British Isles were doing fish and chips, yes.
Yes, and so it's really exciting, and the students were very bought in, but it was great to see how the cafeteria managers have really bought into the theme, and they had globes and flags, and it was really, a really neat celebration. So thank you, Ms. Belcher.
That's wonderful to hear.
Thank you. Mr. Rioswells.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Belcher. Good morning, Superintendent, Board. Okay, so, let's go back to, let's see here. Can we go to Increase Efficiency? Okay, we're going to jump into, well, we'll jump into this one, I'm going to skip around a bit. There's two, three updates I'm going to provide, the first of which is Priority Strategy F, which is to provide financial stability, found fiscal management, and operational efficiency. And so, I'm going to walk through a couple of items that we're working on this year to accomplish our goal of 4.64%, or $23.1 billion fund balance. And so, there's a few examples that I want to give that we're undertaking. The first of which is site-based budgeting. This has been brought up as an initiative by the Board, and it really helps us to provide a more accurate picture of what's going on at our individual schools, and give our principals and administrators greater autonomy, flexibility, and more so accountability in terms of how they're earning their dollars and how they are spending their dollars. And then, of course, the flexibility to move funds around and really manage their budgets. And so, principals, administrators are really taking a more comprehensive role in operating how the budget is managed throughout the year. Again, we really want to focus on how revenue is earned for each FTE, and how those funds are spent throughout the duration of the school year. The second area that we focus on is providing ongoing budget monitoring and reporting. This is done through a couple of different vehicles, monthly financial reports, monthly budget amendments, and then, of course, quarterly and financial reports and analyses that is not only provided to our administrators, but also to the Board and various committees that we have in terms of oversights, like cert tax and referendum. The next area is engaging with stakeholders on decision-making and financial planning, and this is really looking at meeting our current administrators, where they are in terms of the budget challenges that they may be experiencing at that time, and how to plan and prioritize throughout the school year as things tend to change. Another area is continued budget and training that we want to make sure that we're doing on a continuous basis, and this is done through an annual budget training that's offered to all staff, particularly those administrators and principals that are really on the front lines of making decisions. And this will kick off, actually, tomorrow with Site-Based Budgeting Meeting. It's a kickoff meeting, so that we can go ahead and really lay the groundwork for the 26, 27 school year, but also this year, and rolling out Site-Based Budgeting. So we're very excited about that. Another area is, again, with Site-Based Budgeting and really focusing on working with the principals, so that they understand how the revenue is being earned, not only from the state level, but also dollars that are being earned, either through eligibility or through other services, wraparound services that students are eligible for, because they are more either expensive or they have additional needs that the district needs to support. Lastly, the projected funding imbalance of $4.64 million is going to be a challenge this year. As you all understand, this previous budget period, we did have some challenges as far as coming to the end of the year and realizing that we had a large projected deficit. And so with that, as mentioned in yesterday's Board Meeting, the Board has directed us to start to really take a look at how we are tracking, not only the instructional staff, but also admin staff, because this is the line share of where the dollars are going. And so as we move into Site-Based Budgeting, it's really imperative that we all work together to make sure we keep our eyes on that $23 million fund balance goal, and it's going to be a challenge, but I'm excited about the opportunities that lie ahead of us as far as rolling out Site-Based Budgeting, training, and really continuous process improvement, so that we can make sure that we can land the plane at the end of the year. With that, I will pause for a moment for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Welsh. You touched on several of the things that I just wanted to mention, and I look forward to further conversation, but we, I do think it was a concern of the Board, especially, and we did talk about this Tuesday night, just like you mentioned, when we were at a deficit of $64 million, and we looked at the staff that had been added throughout the year. And so coming up with a process so that each Board Meeting, when we're looking at staff and what's needed within our school communities, we can keep tabs on that, you know, really every two weeks. We can see what's being added, because otherwise, you just end up with a big number. We have added 100 people at the end of the year. And so anyway, I'm looking forward to new processes putting in place, so we can manage that. Also, I wanted to comment on, because our next conversation, really, that Site-Based Budgeting is going to impact. We, we look at, the Board has seen numbers on four or five facilities, where the funds that they bring in don't support their actual school, and so we have to fill those gaps in the amount of millions of dollars. And so I'm looking forward to getting a clearer picture on each budget for each school, the money that they bring in and what it costs to run that school. So I just want to thank you for highlighting those today.
Thank you, certainly, and just to touch on that a little bit, the profit and loss statements for each of the schools, which we're, you know, currently working on, and Site-Based Budgeting will help us to get there. Will be a challenge, but we're rising to the occasion to... to make sure that we can, uh, have all of the, the variables in place so that we can get a clear picture, uh, of what it costs. But I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that, of course, throughout the district, there is a, a certain air of subsidization that takes place between schools regardless of its geographical location, or how much each individual school and each student is earning, given the complexity of the budget. So, uh, we certainly appreciate that, and we look forward to the continued discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Welsh. Anything else from, from the team?
Um, well, I'll just say, and then Dr. Campbell raised her hand too, but I'll, I'll just say, it was interesting, I think even just last night, I was thinking to myself, I wonder when we're going to start having the site-based budgeting trainings, because we understand building into that is gonna take almost at least six months or more of training so that people can be fully prepared to take on that ownership. And I think that the conversation today is timely, and we are going to be leading into pretty complex conversations. And so, making sure that we have a full understanding of how much it costs to operate a facility, and, at any facility, how much it costs to operate that facility, and then, what, the revenue coming in. Because as a businesswoman myself, that's the lens I look at this through it, because we are, we have two jobs as Board Members, the budget and policy. If we really peel back and, and look at our sole responsibilities. And so, managing that budget and truly looking at how much are we spending on a program? Good, bad, indifferent, and then how much, how much revenue is coming in from the students we're serving? And then figuring out how to close the gap to be more financially responsible. And that is a focus that I have maintained, and I will continue to maintain, because we need to maximize, in, in a season where the cup runneth over, there is less focus on that, because there's a little bit more flexibility. But we had a hard season, budget season last season, and I imagine that trend is not going to just stop. So, I imagine the next season will be as, um, as challenging. And so, how do we continue to tighten the belt? So, I look forward to the continued conversations.
Thank you, Dr. James.
Yes, Dr. Campbell.
Thank you. Dr. James eloquently said a lot of the thoughts that I have in my mind. I think, I think part of, first of all, I think this Board is, is also passionate about ensuring we maintain fund balance, as our, as our strategic plan indicates, and as we look to the next strategic plan, the 27 to 31 plan, what those key metrics are gonna be, that we're gonna want to encumber and ensure that we enshrine in that plan. Your leadership and guidance will certainly be helpful with that. I think that, to Dr. James' point, and, and kind of just the future conversation we're gonna have in, in just a few moments, talking about site, site-based budgeting. So, I, I have been, as everyone knows, have been a huge proponent of this for the last five years, uh, moving toward that, in part because I've seen, we've all seen, the state legislature has been very focused on dollars following students. And if that's the way our state now funds education, and is the pathway that we are not changing from, I, I mean, it, it would take an entire shift in mindset over a 10 to 20-year timeframe, based on all the changes that have just been seen in the last five to six years from the state legislature funding students. Um, I, I believe we have to get even more cognizant of every dollar following students. And does that mean that class sizes had to change this year? Absolutely. I, I mean, it's unfortunate, but that's how we balance the budget. And other districts had done it long before we did, but it, we're, we're gonna have to start getting serious about what that looks like. Does that also mean that we can't have an elementary school with 300 students anymore? Maybe. I, I mean, I, I know that that's a very tough pill to swallow, and this isn't necessarily a time and place to have that conversation, but when we're talking strategic plan about fiscal responsibility, and that is our primary goal, policy, which we'll be talking about on, on October 31st, and budgeting that we talk about as often as we can, I, I think that we're gonna have to really get serious about what it's gonna take, inclusive of a funding referendum that we need to also have conversation about that expires within an 18-month timeframe. So, we now have all of our art, music, PE, all, all of those teachers funded out of that referendum, 100% of their salaries. And if we don't get that referendum, or determine what we're gonna ask for, because we haven't even determined that yet, uh, where's that money coming from? So, inclusive also of at least part of our SRO salary, all of that. Nevertheless, I, I digress. I just, I'm grateful that we are moving in the direction of site-based budgeting, and, and our conversations, uh, Mr. Welsh, I believe that you are definitely a leader who's gonna help us get into some of these tough places, and have real conversations about where the dollars are, and where they're not, and where they're coming from, and where they're not coming from any longer. And, um, so I'm, I'm grateful to have you here, and I, I think it's gonna be, uh, helpful for us to continue to dialogue. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Board Member Thor, did you have?
Just, I jotted down a, a couple of things. Um, budget and policy are, are main and, and, you know, really only, if you want to say only, expectations. Uh, and through that, you know, it requires advocacy, and I'm, and I'm proud of this Board for continuing to make the connections and partnerships with our legislators to help them understand the impacts of some simple statements, such as, "The money's going to follow the student," okay? Well, what does that look like, and how is it being managed? And so far, uh, they've been taken by surprise, and they're flat on their heels. And so, as we continue to work through this, this process, I think our advocacy continues to be more and more critical, and the relationships that we've built, where we're honestly able to say, "Hey, we know we could be doing better in this area, and, and that if we work together, we can make all of the areas better." Because one student can blow a site-based budget, you know? Um, so, being a businesswoman myself is very different than managing public education. It just is. There are some strong similarities that I am excited about, you know, doing better in, and just knowing the, the profit and loss of each school is, is really, you know, great information, and, and really interesting, and should help us guide in our decisions. But personally, as a Board Member, I never want to lose sight of who we're here to serve. You know, uh, you don't just throw out the bad blueberries because it's not profitable. Exactly. So, while there are elements to, uh, both that are really important, fiscal responsibility is huge, but in the end, I, I do think we need to always keep at the forefront that we are here to serve students, and that needs to be our guiding light as we allocate resources. So, yeah, we're moving, it's, it's an interesting time. That's all I have.
Thank you, Board Member Thor. Reverend Cummings, did you have anything to share?
I just thought of one thing real quick, if you don't mind, before you go. I, as we go into the strategic plan,
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I would like to see from the Superintendent in your office, ensure that we're including strategic, that seems silly to use the word strategic, but like some very focused, actionable steps that are, that are not as theory-based, like increase the fund balance to whatever, but how? Like, like the actual, the actual strategy behind it. Because specifically in this sector, which is essentially the backbone of everything else, like if we can't figure out the money, none of the rest of it is going to happen. And so, I, I would love to see strategic plan sub-goals in this category that are incredibly actionable, so that we, you know, when we look at utilization of schools, and we say, okay, well, based on utilization, we need to see a increase or a decrease based on growing or declining student population by X amount, or we need to see, based on P&Ls, you know, every school needs to look to have an average of at least 650 kids, because that's where the break even is. And just really having actionable, data-based information so that we can truly take informed steps to get to that next five-year goal. Um, so as we get into this planning, I just wanted to make sure I shared that thought so that we have, um, some frame.
Good, then thank you for those comments, uh, Board Members, and, um, you know, it's not lost on me that when we talk about site-based budgeting, and really, as you mentioned, Dr. James, all of the, the various strategies that we really want to look at, um, this coming year. Uh, it is really an all-the-above, uh, answer. It's not just one particular strategy. And so, that's an area that we're certainly, uh, gonna have to look at, because there is no, um, silver bullet or, uh, panacea to solve these issues. It is gonna take a lot of diligent work on the, on behalf of the staff uh, to make some difficult decisions, and that's, that's why we're here. Uh, but we are, you know, out of the woods in the sense of coming out of the COVID era with temporary funds expiring, and now we have to have a path forward. And that does mean that we're gonna have, uh, to have some deliberation and discussion around priorities. And, uh, as CFO, that's my, uh, primary focus, is to help the Board and the Administration figure out what those priorities are, and what they're not, and how we can get there. So, thank you for the comments.
Thank you very much.
Okay, if there's no other questions on that particular strategy, I'm going to just go back a bit here, and I did want to touch on one area, or two areas. Uh, procurement. Although this goal has been met, um, in terms of increasing efficiency in the procurement of goods and services, which is actually a good segue from our last, um, discussion, this is an area that we want to continue to focus on in terms of how we're procuring our goods and services, how do we get good value? How do we make sure that we're getting the best use out of the money, the limited money that the district has? And so, I want to just kind of highlight, and I want to give a big shout out to our team, um, in procurement, Mr. Rick Collins, uh, and his team that work tirelessly to make sure that, you know, we are getting the best deal, uh, for the money, uh, out there on the street. And I, I do want to highlight some of those activities. Uh, so, you know, exploring things like a web-based bid and contract management system, streamline our processes, uh, is something that we've been able to, to put out there, um, to make sure that our VendorLink, uh, application is really comprehensive. It's a really great, uh, bidding platform, and allows us to streamline our processes. Also, reducing the amount of time that it takes to enter into a contract. Uh, this is an area where we want to make sure we're having great vendor relations, and so being able to streamline that process is, is critical to our success. And also, you know, looking at, uh, some examples of various sessions that we can provide out there to get feedback and training to the staff on how procurement works, um, to make sure that the district, in its entirety, regardless of whether you sit at a school, or you are in central office, that you're following the proper procedures, and that you have the support that you need, so that when you're trying to procure, uh, a good or service from either a national or a local vendor, uh, you can do that with ease, and that these vendors have been properly vetted. With that, I will pause for any questions on procurement.
I just quickly want to say thank you, uh, Ms. Mr. Welsh, for mentioning, I think communication is a big part of that, and, and you mentioned training for staff and following procedures. And so, recently, the conversation, um, that I've been a part of is, is we have some improvement to do at the school-based level, and so that we make sure that we're going through, um, when we're acquiring services, that we're going through the correct channels to, so that we're covered legally, um, on the services that we're purchasing. So, thank you for acknowledging that. Anything else from the Board? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Uh, the next item I'll briefly mention, um, before I believe we close out, uh, is just related to risk management, which is, which is a goal that we've actually accomplished. So, again, kudos to the risk management team, and Michelle Brown, who are leading that work, uh, in going from 26 to 19 incidents. But I do want to just highlight a couple of the key strategies that we do employ, uh, throughout the year. And most of this takes place through meaningful communication, uh, and meetings at the school, uh, so that they understand, um, you know, the various guidelines, and, for example, the new loss prevention, uh, manual that we just rolled out, that that information is being disseminated to the staff. And she's going out in meeting, uh, at the individual schools, looking at their plans, making sure that if there's, uh, an area on school property or any other risk where there could result, uh, in a situation, that work orders are being put in, and that's being handled in a timely manner. So, we're proud of all the staff in terms of being able to accomplish, um, these goals, particularly procurement and risk management, and notwithstanding the challenge around fund balance. And so, I want to thank the entire, um, leadership team, Dr. Brewer, and the entire Administration, and all of our, our principals, and the entire, uh, district staff. It really takes, uh, one team, one mission, to get all of these things accomplished. So, that's not lost on me. Um, with, under Dr. Brewer's leadership, we're gonna continue to really focus and look under the hood for all of these areas. And then, of course, as we move into the next strategic planning phase, uh, we'll continue to, uh, identify those key activities that are really gonna move the needle. And I think that's, uh, what I'm hearing from the Board today, is that in terms of fund balance, uh, particularly, uh, but also some of these conversations around utilization, and, uh, we really need to be looking at, how do we move the needle? What are our priorities? But also balance that with a focus on outcomes. With that, Dr. Brewer?
Thank you, Mr. Welsh. Go ahead, Ms. Conrad.
I think Dr. Campbell has something to add.
I, I was just gonna say something very quickly, just because while we're talking about risk, just as that reminder to all of our employees that open enrollment is going on right now, that also happened, happens through your department. Uh, open enrollment for our insurance is open, and Board also giving me that opportunity to tell you, next week, as, um, President-elect of Florida School Boards Association, I will be attending my first Florida School Board Insurance Trust meeting. I am the Board Representative on that from FSBA. And Florida School Board's Insurance Trust is a collaboration and, um, consortium of sorts of at least 12 to 15 school districts that use their leverage to purchase property and casualty insurance together. And I think that Mr. Welsh and I have talked a little bit about it, but as soon as I learn a lot more next week, whenever I, I'm with them for four days, uh, I think it will be an opportunity for us to consider in the future. I know that they started as a, just about eight of them, and now it's grown to about 15 different school boards that all participate in that. Uh, so, yeah, crowdfunding, really. So, and they're saving millions of dollars a year because they're doing it together as opposed to going independently. So, just using that as an opportunity, because all falls under risk.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. All right, if that wraps us up, do we have, um, any public comment on Goal Four, fiscal and operational efficiency? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to Item 6.1, North Side Utilization. Um, before we begin, I do want to make just a few comments. Um, at the Board's request, we have changed up how we're gonna accept public comment. So, for all of those, all those in the audience, we're going to go through the presentation, which will be just like we did, um, with Goal Four. There's questions and answers for the Board. But we are then gonna stop, excuse me, and take public comment so that the Board's discussion, um, can follow the public comment. So, I just wanted to share that with you. Also, we are gonna take a hard, um, we're gonna be on a hard stop for 11:30, which we don't normally do. Um, but we anticipate this will be a long, extended, in-depth conversation, and so just wanted to give everyone a heads up on that. All right. Dr. Brewer?
Okay, wait. We're stopping to break and come back?
Yes.
Okay, I don't think that was clear. Unless we're done, obviously. But at 11:30, we're gonna take a break and return. Right?
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Whitehouse.
I, I just want to say, I just, and I said this on Tuesday, on Tuesday evening's Board Meeting, but I just wanted to remind the community that the reason we have this topic on the agenda today is because, um, in early summer months, I think it was early June, the Board asked me to bring a recommendation to the Board to discuss, um, the utilization of the North End with the, um, with the reality of the revenues that we knew we were discussing, also the site-based budgeting. Um, we also had the aging facility, so there were quite a few elements that led into this request from the Board. And so, I convened a group that included our Transportation Department, our facilities, our academics, um, and all of us came together to really, and of course, Mr. Welsh's team, all came together to really provide, um, details and our recommendations. And we have Mr. Whitehouse here that will lead us in that, um, presentation today. Thank you, Mr. Whitehouse.
Thank you, Dr. Brewer. Good morning, and good morning, Board. Madam Chair, if it's okay, I, I would probably prefer we just plow through the whole presentation and lay all the cards on the table before taking questions and discussing.
Okay, that's fine by me. Thank you, Mr. Whitehouse.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, so, we are here to talk about the school utilization concept. All right, so, we are here to talk about the school utilization concepts. As Dr. Brewer mentioned, this was a request of the Board to start looking at this in the summer. And so, we were able to convene a group to come in and start taking a hard look at what we were doing. I'd like to thank our committee members who were a part of that work, and many of those very smart people are here with me today to be able to answer questions at the end that may come up. Myself, Dr. Brewer, Ms. Usher, Mr. Rembert, who's our Area Superintendent for the North End Schools, Mr. Ayers, Ms. Boomback, Ms. Griffith, Mr. Duncan, Mr. Ostenik, and certainly thank them for their help and really plowing through this. So, as Dr. Brewer mentioned, the request from the Board was to take a look at two things. One, we were going to look at how we're utilizing our facilities on the North End, particularly our four elementary schools, which are here for you, Anthony, Fesden, Reddick, and Spar. The other thing that kind of went in tandem with this is also looking at our five-year plan for our alternative learning site. As we know, that our students here at Bridgeway really are exceeding the capacity that we have on our campus here. And so, looking at, is there a way to be able to solve both of those problems simultaneously and how we best utilize our facilities across the district? So, the first goal that we had was looking at efficient utilization of capacity at our elementary schools in the northern area of the county. And I want to pause there just for a moment, just to lay out some of the impetus of why this is important, not just for fiscal and operational efficiency, but we also had a new statute that was passed last year and also a state board rule that just took effect that deals with co-location of charter schools onto public school campuses. And the way it works is that schools of hope that are approved by the State of Florida have the opportunity to co-locate on underutilized public school property. So, they could identify a space like Reddick where we have a wing available and could then take over that wing. And we, as the Marion County Public School System, would be responsible for continuing to operate that facility for them, meaning we pay the utility costs. We would pay for the custodial crew to clean up the campus for them on that part. We would pay for the additional cafeteria workers to be able to run the lunch service for them. But they would obviously, as the charter school, would generate the FTE that would cover the cost for the students. So, we certainly have an urgency at this point. As we mentioned, Tuesday night, we have not received a letter. However, many districts around the State of Florida have already received letters from schools of hope inquiring about vacated or nearly vacated facilities and how they can utilize those. So, we want to make sure that in our discussions, that we're staying ahead of that and that we are utilizing our facilities to the best of our ability to prevent that from happening. Our second goal is looking at how we decrease operation costs. As already mentioned in the last presentation, we did have to make a $64 million budget cut last year when we realized some of the challenges we were facing coming out of that COVID period with the loss of ESSER funding. And so, we want to make sure we are continuing to be fiscally responsible moving forward. We've seen the financial projections for the State of Florida moving forward, and they don't look much better than they are right now. In fact, if you look a few years out in the future, the State of Florida is actually projecting a deficit in their budget, which that means that we're probably not going to see a lot more money coming the way of public education. And as our costs continue to increase for operation of facilities, for health insurance benefits, et cetera, we need to make sure that we are being as fiscally responsible as we can in all of our decisions. Our third goal, obviously, we want to make sure we're providing for the needs of our students in the North Area, that we're meeting their academic needs as well as any wraparound supports that might be available for those students. And then, that last goal, as I touched on, how can we improve facility for our alternative students at Bridgeway? They are currently housed here at this campus. They have outgrown that space. And we would really like to be able to provide a good learning environment for those students as well as they are all Marion County Public School students. All right, so, this chart here shows you the current utilization of our four elementary schools on the North End. This is as of October 2nd, Day 38. You'll see the first column there is the FISH capacity. That's the Florida Inventory of School Houses, just typically referred to as FISH. And what that looks at is the maximum capacity of student stations in a school or how many students we can physically put into a campus in the spaces that we have. It also identifies what the different spaces on campus can be used for, such as identifying specific rooms for students with disabilities, identifying where our cafeteria spaces are, et cetera. You'll see in the next column over, we have our enrollment for each of those four schools and then the percent of our campuses that are utilized based on that enrollment compared to the FISH capacity. And so, you'll notice Reddick is the school, obviously, that is the most underutilized at this point in time, but Anthony also is underutilized. So, this slide provides some additional information about each of those four sites. I will call to your attention, Mr. Rios Welch did send an updated version of the slide to you all last night that just had a few more dollar figures on there at the Board's request to make sure we can paint a clear picture for you all of not only looking at what the operating cost is for each of these four schools, but also looking at how much revenue is actually generated so that we can determine where we are actually operating. And you'll note for each of these four schools, we are currently operating in a budget deficit based on the operating cost of each school and the amount of money generated for each of those schools as they are small enrollment schools. I do also want to point out an update to Fesden Elementary. We have it listed as 20 acres, but we actually did a little bit more digging into that. And there is another piece of property to the North End of Fesden that is also ours. That's all trees right now, but it actually increases the total campus acreage to 38 acres in total. And so, we just want to make sure we have the correct information for you all on there. So, this slide just gives you a quick attendance zone boundary mapping for each of those four schools. Our Reddick, Collier, and Fesden community pulls the largest attendance boundary. Obviously, those are fairly rural areas for the most part scattered through there. And so, we still only pull a fairly small amount of student population from each of those large attendance boundaries. All right, so, we have four concepts that we're going to lay out for you that we discussed. Also, as a reminder, we did provide a quick one-pager of those four concepts that highlight that. So, as we're going through, you can certainly compare back to previous concepts that were presented just for your awareness and becomes a quick reference point as well at the end when we take questions. So, Concept One is to relocate the students currently at Fordham Early Learning Academy to Reddick Collier Elementary. Currently, there are 238 students enrolled at Fordham Early Learning. And as you saw on that FISH capacity report in the previous slide, we have more than 300 seats available at Reddick Collier that could easily accommodate those students and push our facility usage for Reddick Collier closer to 100%. In order to accomplish that, we do recognize that there are students that come to Fordham from south of Fordham. And so, we wanted to make transportation a little bit easier for those families that choose to stay with that program. And so, we would like to provide a hub transportation stop centrally located for those students to make it a possibility for transportation. One thing to note, and I know this is a question that has come up, we are able to transport students younger than five on buses. We, all of our new buses are now equipped with Star seating, which is accommodated seating for younger students that provides better strap support, almost like a booster seat would for a student in a car. And we actually got to experience that firsthand when we were moving students to Fesden from North Mary Middle School last week. We had parents that dropped off their pre-K students at North Mary Middle, and we had to bus them to Fesden. And Dr. Brewer got to strap them into those Star seats and see how they work. And we're very easy to use and very successful in making sure we keep our youngest students safe on the bus as we transport them. So, we would look at providing a hub stop that could allow parents to drop off close to where they currently are and then be able to provide any bus and transportation to and from Reddick Collier for those students. I want to point out very clearly here that, again, the goal is not to close down Fordham Early Learning. Fordham Early Learning would maintain as a school community. We would relocate them physically. However, the concept of Fordham Early Learning Academy would continue. The idea would operate as a school within a school. We could retain the name of Fordham Early Learning Academy with that site. As we know, that a lot of work went into the naming. We know Mr. Fordham was the first principal at Spar and is very important to that North End community and to Marion County Public Schools in general. And we want to make sure that we continue that legacy with that program regardless of its physical location. So, with Concept One, if we were to move the students off of the current Fordham Early Learning Academy campus, we would then free up that space, which could house our students at Bridgeway into a much larger spot. The school capacity for the original campus design where Fordham is located is actually 784 student stations. We have roughly 300 students that are currently attending Bridgeway Academy, so a lot of room for growth there with that facility that we could look at some more unique options for students beyond just what we currently offer at Bridgeway to make sure we're providing support for students, not only that have behavioral needs that need to be met, but also students who have disengaged from education as they get older. We can provide some unique supports there with a larger campus space. I've also talked with Mr. Smallridge at Marion Technical College. He is looking to really be able to find some more space for his adult learning students. The GED program, adult learning, which are housed now in a cluster of portables at Marion Technical College. We have a large cluster of portables that we could potentially remove all of those portables from that site if we can move the staff and the adult ed program out of there, which would free up a huge amount of space at Marion Technical College, not only for parking, but for potential future expansion of buildings and programs and services that we could offer to our students. As we know, our education does not stop at 12th grade. We actually provide more services to our students beyond that. There would be some minor facility modifications required for us to be able to accommodate some of the older students at Bridgeway Academy. And you'll note on the one-pager that our estimated cost for this, to update both Reddick Collier and the current Fordham site to be able to house Bridgeway Academy is roughly $15,000. Most of that is just minor improvements to the bathrooms at both of those sites. So, with that, we would relocate the administrative staff that are currently at Fordham Early Learning Academy, which is most of our mental health and wellness department, back here to the District East site. Moving Bridgeway out would free up this entire Building Four, which is a three-level building here, right next to where most of us are housed in Building Three, which would allow us to centralize the bulk of our district staff into one location, which would make it certainly easier to collaborate and communicate as a district staff. All the other schools in the North End would maintain status quo with this proposal. We certainly would see a cost savings if we are combining two schools together as we can remove some of our redundant services that are provided at two different school sites, one of those being an additional school resource officer. As we know, we just talked about cutting back on referendum funding. So, if we combine campuses, we could go from two SROs down to one SRO between those sites, which, again, would be a cost savings for us as a district, along with several other positions that could be placed elsewhere. All right, so, that is Concept One. With that, we also add it in here, this is a heat map, just shows the current living locations of all of our students that are attending Fordham Early Learning Academy. You'll note all of the elementary schools that they are zoned for and where those students would attend if they were not attending Fordham Early Learning Academy. Our school that has the largest population of attendees is Ocala Springs Elementary. So, when we explore hub stops, that is one of the places we can explore for a hub stop is at Ocala Springs, which would make it convenient for a bulk of those families that are zoned for that school and living around that area. All right, that's Concept One. So, Concept Two, we looked at converting our four elementary schools into K-8 schools. By converting them into K-8 schools, we would obviously retain those students there longer, which would increase the population at all four of those elementary sites. And that would then free up North Mary Middle School as a site for us because the students that are attending North Mary Middle would stay at their K-8 schools that are currently elementary schools, which would allow us a space then, again, to move our Bridgeway Academy students to. That is, again, a very large space that would accommodate any future growth for those programs of our Bridgeway students. So, this just gives you a quick analysis of what it would take to convert a current existing elementary school into a K-8 school. Some of the considerations we would need, one, we would need career and technical education programs available, which currently we do not have skills labs available at those sites. So, we would need to be able to include that to expand our career and technical education opportunities to each of those sites. Science labs and science demonstration spaces, a band room, additional admin suites, and then, of course, a gymnasium. If the school does not currently have a gymnasium, would be necessary to have PE for our middle school students. So, the likeliness of each of these sites would be an additional wing space at each one, which could be roughly 23,000 square feet to accommodate CTE classes and the need for science spaces and additional administrative spaces. Gymnasiums are roughly 18,000 square feet at a middle school. And then, of course, if we're expanding the number of students at the school, we'd likely need to expand the cafeteria size at each site. You'll see on the top right there, we've estimated out what the cost is per square foot, currently at about $410, anticipating if we were to do this a few years in the future, that price would certainly go up. So, we're estimating $430 a square foot for the construction cost. So, your addition of a wing would be roughly $10 million, a gymnasium roughly $8 million, and a new cafeteria at any site roughly $6 million. So, we'll show you each of the four elementary schools and what the potential could look like for converting to a K-8 school. So, on the right-hand side there, you'll see an aerial layout of the school campus and spaces on that campus that we have identified where you could add additional buildings that would accommodate the size space that we need to be able to convert to a K-8 school within the existing campus. So, adding additional wing at Anthony Elementary School, you can see roughly $10 million. We would need to add a gymnasium there. Their cafeteria could handle the size as it is still a relatively small school. So, a total cost of roughly $18 million to expand Anthony. Again, Fesden Elementary School is our largest campus, as we noted, 38 acres. So, we have plenty of space there that we could expand and add a lot more to that existing campus. So, you'll see, again, where we've picked out some spots where we could add some additional buildings to that campus to turn it into a K-8. We would need more classroom space as Fesden is close to 100% capacity already. We would need to increase the cafeteria size. They already have a gymnasium, so that would not be necessary for Fesden. So, a total cost of roughly $16 million. Reddick Collier, you'll see, again, on the right-hand side, we have the current layout of that school. A classroom addition there would be roughly $10 million. And the gymnasium would need to be added. They are, as we note, about 50% utilized, so the cafeteria would not need to be expanded to accommodate adding back the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students that currently attend North Mary Middle School. And so, the rough cost for that, about $18 million. Then, we have Spar Elementary, our last school. Again, this is a fairly large campus that we have at Spar Elementary. It is not quite as landlocked as some of our other schools, giving us plenty of options for where we could place buildings. And so, you'll see on the right where we've identified some potential spaces to be able to add a classroom wing, expanding the cafeteria and adding a gymnasium, a total cost of $24 million to be able to convert Spar into a K-8. So, this gives you a breakdown of how many students that are in grades six through eight that live within each of the attendance zones for those four elementary. So, those would be the numbers of students that would be added back to the pre-K five population. And then, what the total K-8 population would be at each of those schools. Obviously, we would be needing a lot more space at Fesden and Spar as they're operating at close to 100% capacity. And then, you can see our seating needs for the other two schools. There would be a handful of students that we would have to rezone based on where they live to Fort King Middle School and to Howard Middle Schools. They do not currently live within the elementary attendance boundaries for these four North End schools. So, here's our quick analysis of what this total cost would be. So, $76 million would be the total cost if we converted all four of these schools into K-8 schools. Again, it frees up North Mary Middle School as a site for alternative setting for Bridgeway to be able to transport those students up to North Mary Middle School. Here are the current boundaries, again, for our K-8s. If we were to adjust those and not make them just elementary boundaries, we would pull in those students from the elementary zone. And then, you'll see that little swath there on the purple on the bottom right. Those would be the students that we would have to relocate. So, Concept Three would be to combine Spar and Anthony Elementary as one school and build a new school for those two school campuses in that combination. In order to accomplish that, we could temporarily relocate the Spar students, hold the students at Anthony Elementary School, or we could actually do phase construction. You'll see when we look at the map, there's enough space at Spar Elementary that you could actually build a school similar to what we built at Ross Prairie and Winding Oaks behind the campus without ever having to move the students, doing a phase construction approach. So, there are options for how we could handle building that. So there are options for how we could handle building that. So we would want to design this large enough to accommodate both of those school capacities, so roughly a fish capacity of 750, which is fairly similar to where we are with Ross Prairie and Winding Oaks. So we have the concept design already available to us. And then, once we do that, we have options of what we could do with Anthony Elementary School. Certainly, the board has options of retaining the property, selling the property, demolishing the property and land banking it. And you'll see in Concept Four that we also put out another idea for what you could potentially do with Anthony Elementary School as well, if we maintain that building. The cost to build a new elementary school, as we saw with the two we just built, roughly $50 million for a brand-new state-of-the-art facility combining Spar and Anthony. So here's the existing site at Spar, and you can see all of the available land space that we have. This one shows the current buildings. You'll note the years that each of those buildings were constructed. So we have some constructed in the 1960s, one in the 1980s, one in the 1990s that are relatively newer. And I say relative, just in comparison to the other buildings, but certainly they're still getting up there. So this is a proposal of where the new site could go, and you'll see it would fit right behind our existing buildings. We could build out a brand-new school there. And then we have options. We could demolish all of the old buildings, or if the board wanted, we could also keep the two newer ones that were built in the 80s and 90s and only demolish the ones that were built in the 60s, which are the ones, obviously, that have the greater repair costs right now for us. So we have options of what we could do at that school site. So this is an alternative to Concept Three. We could, if we didn't want to build a completely new campus, we could just add enough wing space onto that campus to accommodate the students coming over from Anthony, build a new cafeteria, and then you'll see that works out to roughly $26 million. So it's about half the cost if we wanted to just expand the existing campus to accommodate both Spar and Anthony. Obviously, the downside of that is that we would still have those old buildings that do have regular maintenance costs that we would have to continue investing in as compared to a brand-new facility. Alright, so Concept Four. This option allows us to relocate the students who are currently at Anthony Elementary to Reddick Collier. Again, there's enough space at Reddick to accommodate all of the current students that are attending Anthony Elementary School. So we could combine those without any additional construction, which would then free up the Anthony campus. And what we could do with Anthony campus is use it as an ESE center school. Think of it as an elementary version of Hillcrest. Talking with our principals and with Ms. Anna Williams Jones, our Director of ESE, we definitely have a great need for having this type of school available to us. Our students right now in our ESE self-contained classes are spread out, which means our resources for supporting those students are also spread out. So we could, if we had this option, provide a place where we could concentrate our support services and wraparound services for the students with the greatest need, looking at our students with both the greatest cognitive need and students with the greatest behavioral needs as well, which allows us to provide better onsite service when we can localize that. And I think you all have seen the great work that we do at Hillcrest and what we can accomplish with a much more localized program like that. Again, the cost for this one is pretty negligible, $15,000 roughly. Again, just some minor updates to the Anthony campus to make it accessible for all of our student needs. So we could also look at some combinations of concepts, and I think most of you have seen that as you've gone through, that you could do a lot of these concepts simultaneously or back-to-back. So you could look at doing Concepts One and Three combined, which would allow us to quickly address the Bridgeway students, the capacity at Reddick Collier, and then looking at a long-term project of completing the new elementary school. Certainly, the board has to decide where that would fit within the timeline of the other school projects that we have established right now. Some of the other things that we're going to work on, regardless, we certainly want to continue to pursue some grants for Fesden. Because it is a historic site, there are a lot of opportunities out there for us to secure some grant funding for renovations and potential additions to Fesden down the road, so we certainly are going to pursue that regardless. And then beyond that, we really just need to continue analyzing all of our facility usage that we have, trying to figure out which of our older buildings we can really repair, which ones just need to be demolished as we move forward into the future. So a quick summary, again, this is what you have on your one pager. So Concept One, roughly $15,000. Concept Two is the most expensive one at $76 million, converting to the K-8 schools. Concept Three, depending which way you wanted to go with a brand-new school, $50 million, or with an expanded Spar campus, $26 million. Concept Four, again, one of our least expensive options that could be done in a combination with any of the other options as well. So our staff recommendation, after the team deliberated these four concepts, we recommend Concept One and Three combined. Concept One is something that we could do fairly easily with a goal of being able to target this for next school year. We could have the students moved, we could have the facilities updated, we could free up the Bridgeway space to move staff over. Most of those are fairly, from a logistical standpoint, fairly uncomplicated. And then Concept Three, we certainly see a need for some new construction on the north end. A lot of our schools on the north end are getting much older. And as you saw on that one-page handout, the amount of money that we anticipate spending over the next 10 years in facility management for those campuses gets rather extensive. Certainly, building a new school to accommodate two of those would cut down on those long-term costs for those facilities. Alright, and then I will turn it over to Dr. Brewer, and we can answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Whitehouse. Chair Conrad, I'd like to open it up to the board for clarification, questions, concerns. Dr. James?
I just have a few clarifying thoughts, and then maybe we'll get into opinion after that. Is that okay? The FISH, I've heard it back and forth regarding Reddick Collier. Is the FISH report, and Steven's in the back, so he could just do a head nod, but is the FISH report including Building 10? Okay, I see a head nod. Thank you for that. I wanted to make sure, because I feel like we've gone back and forth with that historically, so I wanted to make sure. I think it's important to point out that Option Four is presented, would create the same scenario that we currently have at other places. We don't have 400 students who need a center school and elementary. And so we would essentially just be shifting the opportunity for co-locating from one school to another by putting a, what I think would be probably less than 100-student enrollment all-in for a center school for elementary, on a campus with a FISH of 400. And so I think that there is absolutely a need for a elementary center school like Hillcrest. And I think I have other ideas of where we could do that, that would be more responsible with the space we have. But I don't think that moving Anthony to Reddick, there are kids that literally walk to Anthony. So to then put them on a bus all the way to Reddick, you know, when we talked to the Anthony-Spar combo, some of the conversations that we have from transportation were like the bus is kind of going by either way, and so it wasn't as heavy of a lift. But the bus for Reddick is certainly, I would imagine, not going by Anthony Elementary. And so that's, that, to me, is not really feasible. But furthermore, because then it doesn't, if we continue to use the facility, we're going to continue to put ourselves in the same co-locating battle. So that is kind of the heartburn I have around that, and that would be a barrier for me because of that co-locating.
Can I just add to that conversation, Dr. James? So one thing we know, Anthony, part of our FISH report does include portables, which those portables could be removed to reduce the number of student stations. Those portables are currently used for some of our students, but could be removed once we made that shift. Also, to keep in mind, if we were to identify that as an ESE center school, we would have to reevaluate the FISH report, because the FISH report right now identifies classrooms based on student stations for a traditional K5, which could have up to 22 seats in there. But if we reduce those down to all being ESE classrooms, you'd really be looking more at like seven, eight, nine, 12 student stations in a classroom, which would greatly reduce the overall seating.
Absolutely. I think, I still don't think, you know, having some private conversations with district leadership, I don't think we even have 100 elementary students, as of right now at least, unless we move them from other sites that they're currently in an inclusion, like a self-contained, but in an inclusive environment like Maplewood. Moving them to a center school would be a more restrictive environment, which obviously we're very careful about making those decisions. So that's just kind of the reservation I have with that. I have some, I guess, recommendations, but I will wait till the rest of the board has a conversation, unless you, whatever you want me to do.
I think we're going to do public comment before we get into our opinions. I thought that's what we decided to do. But I do have a question, a clarifying question.
Go right ahead, Dr. Campbell.
Because something that we have received feedback from folks asking about the expansion of Fordham Early Learning. So currently, we are licensed for 279 seats, I believe, is what I saw. The opportunities for expansion of that licensure, what does that look like? Or is that even something that we would do with? I mean, it would certainly change the depth and breadth of what's occurring on that campus.
Yeah, you're correct. And I also want to point out, we did have, we did anticipate greater student enrollment at that school this year. We had a number of units that were provided to the school anticipating that, but we ended up having to pull those units back because we didn't get the student interest generated that we anticipated for the school year.
So, but currently licensed for 279, would there be an opportunity, just because we, licensure is a big deal. And so I know another piece of that licensure that we've, that a lot of folks are really pleased with, is the DCF licensure for the three-year-olds for extended learning and aftercare and all. So, I mean, licensure is a big deal. And so to go through an expansion of that licensure would, I mean, I don't even know what that would look like. But, I mean, to even make it to go to 350 or something like that, is that even a possibility? Like, I just want to make sure, because this is commentary we've been getting, people, nearly every comment I received when I commented back then, they said, "Well, we just need to continue to expand at Fordham." And I'm like, "Uh, we really..." Because of the licensure, I mean, 274 is what it is, on a campus with 789 FISH. So expanding that licensure agreement, what does that even look like?
I think we'd have to do a little more research into that, Dr. Campbell, but we could certainly do that.
I want, what do you mean by licensure agreement? I'm sorry.
Well, I mean, we are at the point where we can only, I'm sorry?
Like certified?
Yeah, we are certified to serve 274 students, by DCF, by DOE.
I don't think the DCF licenses for 274. It's not, right? We only have about three rooms that are DCF-certified in the playground. So I think, I mean, I could look it up online, but I think the DCF, I mean, Ms. Beck can give me a head nod, but I think it's between 50 and 100 kids, more than that. Okay, so like 150? Okay, yeah, I mean, she can come up if she wants, but, because I don't think it's for the full 279.
Okay, that's fine. I just think it's an important clarification, because, again, a lot of feedback we've already received. Let's go ahead and get something out there to answer a question, if we can, while we're in the middle of this part.
So really, it's the space that's licensed, and it has to do with the square footage. So we actually have quite a few rooms at Fordham that are DCF-certified rooms for the idea of expansion, whether that be through 3K programming or whether that be through aftercare programming. And that, to start with, was primarily the reason that we did certified additional rooms, so that we could look at spreading students out, since we were serving three-year-olds all the way up to second grade. But it is really dependent upon the space. They come in and they measure. And I think going back to that 279, that has to do with the FISH report, because half of our campus is being utilized for district offices. I think if it wasn't, then obviously those, that FISH number would go back up again, so...
Okay, that helps clarify the thought in my mind on that. Okay, that's all the clarifying question I had at this point, I think.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Thor.
I have a couple of clarifying questions that I think just are foundational to this conversation that I'm still struggling with. What is the definition of underutilization when it comes to this state? And I also want to share, you know, we just opened two brand-new schools, so therefore we have less capacity, which we did for a reason, you know, to reduce pressure on those schools down in the south. So I guess what I want to know is, I need a better definition of the threat to be able to manage it. So my first question is, is that, is there a percent that defines underutilized? And then is there a timeline? Like, yeah, 25% underutilization for a period of the previous three years, now you're fair game? I just don't understand enough the ground rules.
So Ms. Torres and I have had some conversation about that. He could certainly clarify more, but there really is no hard, fast definition from the state. I mean, really, it's what's beneficial to a charter school company? What's advantageous to be able to come in and utilize? So if you have four classrooms, it's not very advantageous for a charter school company to come in. In a case like Reddick, where you have an entire wing available, now it becomes advantageous that you could actually start a program and build a program at that site without having to have your classrooms intermingled with other classrooms of students from the other school campus.
Okay. And if we're having trouble filling Reddick, then because of its location and just not having that many kids out there, I would imagine a charter school would have the same problem, including, you know, out at East Marion, too, for example. I sort of made a joke, they'd have to go out in the forest and get the fawns if they wanted more kids. But then also, FISH capacity versus school capacity? What's the state, you know, which one are they looking at? Because, for example, Fordham now has less capacity, because we have district out there, we put a fence there, made an investment in it. So does that, which definition is the state going by?
Yeah, and I'll probably turn to Steven, but I think it's FISH for what we're looking at, because once we redesignate a space as no longer holding student stations, at that point, there's nothing available when you pull up a FISH report to be able to say, yes, there's seats available that we could utilize.
That's really important, because there's a big difference between FISH capacity and total capacity. And if, through our own efforts as a school board to, for lack of a better term, fill up those underutilized schools with, it's getting to the point where we're having a central office, because we're just so big geographically, it's almost better to have satellite areas. And if that gets the state off our backs, then this could be a whole different conversation.
In the terms of capacity, there's only one capacity, and that's FISH capacity. And that's the Florida inventory of schoolhouses. And that's what DOE recognizes as capacity. So anything that we use, we use FISH capacity, because that's the official capacity.
I really appreciate that clarification, because if a campus holds 700 kids, but we've already shortened up their, or reduced those numbers, then that's the reality we need to be working with, right?
Right, yeah. So what we did is, with Fordham, we did reduce those capacities, and we can go back as well and put that capacity back, because it's all on the, how the utilization of that is.
Right, you could, yep, you could, take down that fence and everything else, but, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Thor. Reverend Cummings?
You guys are addressing, you all are addressing the questions that I have. Thank you, Ms. Thor, for that concern, the FISH report, and what number the state is actually looking at, and that timeframe. There was no timeframe given, correct?
For when they could start utilizing, so we're asking. So the, I think the official date starts November 11th. There was a cooling-off period from when the state board rule is published to when it actually goes into effect. So some of these charter companies that already started sending out letters have done so prematurely, I think, just really to give notice to the school districts of their intent, but they can't officially do anything until after that cooling-off period.
And, Mr. Whitehouse, you, I think I heard this number, I'm just making sure. The concept of the ESE school of, at Anthony, you guys have identified only about 100 kids?
No, I said that.
Oh, okay, I knew I had 100 somewhere.
Yeah, so in my conversation with Ms. Williams Jones, if we went with a behavioral and cognitive support model, we could probably have 200 students in that campus. Hillcrest really focuses more on cognitive support for students, but with our elementary students, we also have a pretty strong need for some behavioral support for those students.
And right now, those kids are kind of all over the district. And it would be more of a central hub, where they can put all those services in one place?
Correct.
Great, okay. Thank you.
And may I just offer one thing on the piggyback to that. Years ago, Maplewood Elementary School was opened, because many years ago, Hillcrest had students from very young, you know, all the way to, they aged out at 18 back in those days. Well, we've continued to grow as a community. We have a larger ESE population, so Maplewood technically couldn't house all the kids anymore. So then they started going out to different places, different schools, and there's different schools of thought on whether that's, you know, good, bad, or indifferent. But, you know, we've evolved now, it's, what, almost 30 years later? So it's an important conversation. Okay, thank you.
Dr. Campbell, are you good?
I think so. I think... I think if we're actually including Schools of Hope as a part of the conversation, which it seems like we might be, I was just trying to pull DOE reports, because a part of what Schools of Hope definition also includes is the persistently low performing. And so, the Florida law defines persistently low performing as a school that's earned three grades lower than a C in three of the previous five years. So, it's not going to necessarily mean that all of our schools would be in danger of that. Oakcrest might be, and we're at 60-some-odd percent capacity at Oakcrest right now. So, like, if we're including that as a part of the conversation, I just want to make sure that we understand all the pieces. It's not just that you have vacant or underutilized spaces, it's also the grade that will also dictate where those Schools of Hope could go.
Yes, ma'am. So, the grade is part of it. The new rule language actually included the lowest, I believe, 10% of schools in terms of ELA proficiency. And so, that fluctuates from year to year. And in reality, you could have CB-rated schools that, because the entire state's ELA proficiency increased, are in the lowest 10%, even though they're not really struggling, and by definition, a School of Hope could move in there.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Whitehouse, I just have, really have one question for clarifying. On Concept 2 and 3, can we afford them? We were just talking about tracking employees, you know, as they're coming on, and we just cut $64 million from our budget. These are great ideas, and I love them, but are they something that we can currently afford?
I think Concept 2 is probably the most cost prohibitive, not just from the obvious dollar sign, but because it doesn't do anything with the aging facilities that currently exist at those schools. So, the projected expenditure in facility upgrades over the next 10 years would still remain for those school sites. Whereas, with the concept of Spar Elementary and Anthony combination, if we were to demolish the old Spar site upon building the new one, one, it's less costly, it's $50 million compared to $76 million, but then we eliminate the ongoing expected expenditures for buildings that were built in the 1960s that would no longer exist. We'd now have a brand-new campus. So, it could be afforded, but again, the board would have to decide where within that timeline does that fit? Because right now, we've talked about Bellevue Elementary and Bellevue Santos combination. We know we have Lake Room Middle School getting built. We've talked about Donnell and possibly down the road. So, we would have to decide where within that timeline.
Right, so there will be a sacrifice?
Yes.
Is what you're saying, yeah. It's not, we cannot do what we have slated, you know, what is planned for now, what we're currently working on, something else is going to have to give.
Correct.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
And I just wanted to add a piggyback to that. If we go back to some data and conversations we had, it's probably approaching 12 months ago now, but I think an important key thing to remember here is with Option 2, the enrollment at those schools is still not going to break even. Those schools are still all going to operate at a loss every year. And I'm not the CFO, but I've done the math, and I can tell you, a K-8 school operating with sub-600 kids is not going to break even. So, we're actually going to expenditure a ton of money and still be losing money. And so, to me, if we're going to expend money, we need to then save money, so that over the course of, let's say, a 20-year ROI, we are recovering the money we've put out, right? We have to look, at some point, we do have to start looking long-term, and these are conversations, we've had about Booster Stadium as well, like, you know, is there a potential to recoup the money that we are spending in the long-term? To me, Option 2 is not offering any, any financial positive outlook. I think when we look at the Spar-Anthony combination, when I sat with our former CFO and we looked at that forecast, essentially 10, 15 years down the road from an operating expenditure cost, because you are, you're relieving essentially the $2.5 million annually it costs to operate a site when you merge them. When you take that to forecast and include that with the maintenance costs that are required for both of those sites, you actually put yourself, you know, you're not making money, but you're, you are putting yourself at a net neutral when you forecast out 20 years, because you've replaced an aging facility, you've gotten rid of another aging facility, and then you've offline that $2.5 million of residual, which is always increasing, because we offer raises every year, for the cost to operate the facility. So, that is, to me, the key component there of looking at the forecast of the financial responsibility, not just the right now. But yes, I mean, it's going to require essentially revisiting the sale tax prioritization list and having continued conversations. I mean, that's where the money's going to come from, and revisiting that conversation. But, from a financial outlook, it does provide, I think, I mean, Mr. Rios would be the expert in this, and certainly don't want to put him on the spot, because I didn't have the conversations with him, but it provides a net neutral for sure in the long run for the two schools. So, I just wanted to make sure I added that. But those, that Option 2, we're losing it, we're losing our butt continuously in Option 2. Like, there's no way we're ever breaking even on that option. And we're spending a ton of money.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Are there any other clarifying questions from the board? Okay, with that, we're going to open it up for public comment. Mr. Whitehouse, sorry, Mr. Whitehouse, you're still at the podium. Is there anything else you wanted to add?
No, ma'am, I'm gathering my stuff, and I'll step out of the way for them.
All right. So, we're going to open it up to public comment. Ms. Martinez-Yong, will you call one at a time?
Samantha Cobble. Okay, can you hear me okay?
You've dropped the mic.
All right, is that better?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Samantha Cobble, as COBBLE, and I'm a 15-year Marion County resident and also Fordham parent. I'm asking you to reject the opinion, or the option, that moves Fordham to Rettick-Collier and places Bridgeway Academy on the Fordham campus. This is personal for my family. My son was about to get kicked out of daycare, of private daycare, because I chose to place him in public VPK, and they didn't like that, because they weren't going to be getting that money, right? He needed adults that had consistent, you know, consistent routines and positive support. He needed a calm, developmentally-focused environment for his intellectual capabilities. The proposal that you have here would relocate Fordham's pre-K to grade 2 students to Rettick-Collier, because there's space available, and it would move Bridgeway to the Fordham site. I want to be clear, I respect that Rettick-Collier's an elementary school, okay? My concern is disruption in access. Many Fordham families, mine included, depend on the location. I wouldn't be driving my sons, I have two sons, and they both go to Fordham currently. I would not be driving them to Rettick-Collier. It's too far. It doesn't make any sense. I also wouldn't be able to participate in the things that I participate in now, like parent conferences, activities at the school. There's lots of different things, you know, they call me, they're sick, I can be there in a minute, literally, a minute, to pick up my children. So, even with the suggested transportation hub near the Fordham site, the day-to-day reality for parents still involves extra time and extra logistical strain on those parents. At the same time, the plan would place Bridgeway students, a secondary alternative program, into a campus designed for very young children, and it's been a lot of great improvements for very young children in the last few years. This document describes only minor modifications, but let's be real, there's a lot of safety issues these days, and it's only increasing. I know that that metal detector you have out front cost nearly $4,000 five years ago. How much would five of those cost that need to be at every entry potentially in the future, right? So, we're trading two, you know, the stability of two vulnerable groups here, and the, you know, that number may cover that, like a move order, but it's still, there's just too many other changes that would be needed. There's also the matter of parent choice. Fordham right now is the only school that has a 3PK program, and we're paid, like, we pay for that. Like, that's not, that's not a free program. But it also has VPK students that can do aftercare, which I utilize and need for my career, right? So, I just want to keep that in mind. I support having K through 8 at these elementary schools.
Your time has expired.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph Schaefer?
Morning. Joe Schaefer, S-C-H-A-F-E-R. I'm a parent at, of a child at Fordham, and we elected to send our daughter there after doing the school choice program. If the school were closed, we would not send our child to Citra every day. So, I'll start off with that. As a facilities director myself, you know, Dr. Sarah James, your comments about data-driven decision-making, they resonate with me. I see some gaps in the data presented. I appreciate that a lot of this information is behind closed doors and sometimes not publicly available, so I'm just going to bullet point what I observe for the group. Concept 1 does initially create a year-one, day-one underutilized campus at Fordham, which is, as you've also said, a primary driver for the overall North Marion County school objective activity. Chart 10, 15K in upgrades, details not really shared with group. It stands and really start contrast to the other options presented. For options available, I think more options analysis is needed, what that 15K represents seems understated. Concept 1 doesn't appear to show the relevant data of all the facilities costs for Fordham compared to the other four schools, like average age, acreage, building space, OpEx, overall maintenance costs, LRP, things like that. I noticed in the data presented that Rettick and Fessiden do have the highest long-range maintenance costs in the portfolio of the campuses being explored, and, you know, continuing to utilize these campuses in the future doesn't appear to be in line with the board's driving purpose desire to reduce overall budgets. Slide 4, I noticed one of the goals of, it's not really talked about, excuse me, is effective deployment of capital budgets. You know, the board's comments are all really focused, as they should be, on budget conscientiousness. The OpEx and the CapEx go hand-in-hand, so if you increase your CapEx costs with Option 3, or Option 2, you know, to that 26 or 50 million that you're talking about, you know, you're going to pay the same depreciation expense year-over-year for that new facility, and there should be a guesstimate figure shown in the data presented that takes into account that depreciation expense. But I also don't see any assumptions made for the sale of the asset that you're going to be vacating, the sale of the land, the sale of the buildings, and then that figure to, of offset maintenance and operating costs from the campuses you're going to close. I think that's important to consider when you're closing campuses. And I see, I'm almost out of time, so I don't have any other comments. Thanks.
Thank you. Melissa Nova?
Melissa Nova, N-O-V-O-A. I was here speaking just the other night, and I, we talked about some key points and why Fordham's important, but after chatting with my kids this morning, getting ready, I was reminded why a standalone Fordham Early Learning Center is so important, and I wanted to share that. We had our normal morning, getting ready, and my five-year-old reminded me, I was talking about her amazing teachers, like she always does, and she said, "I love my teachers so much, Mom, and guess what? They're all, they're not just my teachers, they're my friends." It was a sweet moment, and I couldn't agree more. As teacher myself, I know the value of a teacher and a teacher's impact, but it made me really think about Fordham and what we're fighting for. My son, I shared a little bit about him, but he went to his zone school for a day, and when he picked him up, and at that time, he was nonverbal, I didn't feel like I could send him back the next day. I didn't know anything about his day. So, after talking to some of my friends in the district, working in the district for many years, they told me about the best pre-K teacher they've ever seen, and the next day, he started in her class at one of our, one of our amazing elementary schools, and he did have, I believe, the best pre-K teacher that I've ever met, and he still really struggled. He still had a lot of hard times, and it wasn't in the classroom, it was everywhere else, in the cafeteria, in the car line, in the hallways. It was very overwhelming for him, and he just really struggled. And it reminded me that at Fordham, he didn't just have amazing teachers, he had the setup he needed to be successful. He, he had the atmosphere that focused on early learning, where he, and I quote, because he has the same, he had the same pre-K teacher at both schools. She told me she was following her passion to follow a school that was focused on early learning, and when chatting with him at conferences about my son, she said, "He's a different kid at Fordham. He's able to thrive here," and it's true. And I know he's just one child, but he's, he's showing that the statistics are true, that at schools focused on early learning, they have an 8% increase in graduation rates. And 11%, I'm sorry, the 8% was on a reduced need for special need programs, and he's, he shows that. He was in speech, speech therapy, language, he has a language disorder, language therapy, reading intervention, reading, an IP for reading and for math, and for occupational therapy, and those are all on consult now. And by third grade, those will be gone. If we catch these young learners before that time, it makes all the difference. I hope you'll consider that. Thank you.
Jade Dean?
Good morning. My name is Jade Dean, J-A-Y-D-E-D-E-A-N. Thank you. I am the proud mother of three amazing children, two of whom attend Fordham Early Learning Center, and a one-year-old that is enrolled in the Stepping Stones program. Our journey into the school system began with a challenge. My five-year-old was zoned for Oakcrest Elementary, but there were no VPK spots available for my four-year-old son. The Oakcrest administrator recommended Fordham, and that recommendation changed everything. Our orientation, what we found was more than just a school. We felt warmth, support, and genuine care. My children, who were terrified of school and being around older kids, walked away smiling. My son even hugged me that day and said, "Thank you for picking this school." Since enrolling at Fordham, my children have blossomed. My kindergarten has gone from struggling to reading full sentences, and my VPK student can now spell his full name and speaks about his emotions and tells me about his safe space, and that has also helped his behavior in many ways. Even my youngest, thanks to the Stepping Stones program, is more talkative and more social and confident than ever. This growth didn't happen by accident, and it is the result of being in a safe, loving, and nurturing school environment, exactly what Fordham has provided. The proposed merger would take that away. It would strip my children of the progress they've made and the confidence they've built. As a parent, I cannot accept that. I've also deeply, I'm also deeply concerned about the academic history of Rettick-Collier Elementary, which is consistently ranked in the bottom 20% of Florida elementary schools over the last decade. Why should our B-rated students be uprooted and placed in a struggling environment? If this merger goes forward, I will have no choice but to withdraw my children from the public school system. I would leave college, stay home full-time, and homeschool them, not because I want to, but because I can no longer trust the system to protect their education. The concept of hub for transportation is also an issue, because now that somebody else as parents, we have to trust with our children. This decision affects real families, real children. Please don't let this decision force us to sacrifice our kids' futures. I urge you, please protect Fordham, protect the students who are thriving there, and don't take away the one place where they felt safe, successful, and supported. Thank you for hearing us. I hope you'll choose to stand with the families and the teachers and the students who are already showing you what success looks like if you let it continue. Go Fordham Foxes, and thank you.
Thank you. Emma Dingman, Chandra Oats?
Good morning, board members. My name is Emma Dingman, and this is Sharonda Oats, and we are both, oh, D-I-N-G-M-A-N, sorry.
Sharonda Oats, O-A-T-S.
And we are both, two of the very first out of three teachers hired at Fordham Early Learning Academy, before we had a name, a building full of students, or a single child enrolled. I was happy at my prior school, and I took a chance on a vision that you, the board, agreed to, a belief that early learning should be celebrated, supported, and valued as the foundation of everything that follows in education. As faculty members, many questions have arisen among us and our peers, questions we hope you will consider carefully before making a decision. Has consideration been given to how specials teachers will be accommodated in new arrangement? Will two teachers be required to share one space? What will happen to the clerical and administrative staff currently serving at Fordham? Fordham is the only location providing map for VPK students, which is a huge draw for working parents. Will that continue if we are moved? Currently, Fordham serves 64 students in beforecare and 119 students in after-school care. That is 50% of our student population served in before and aftercare catering to the working family. We are currently operating four VPK units on our campus. Can the district confirm whether these positions will remain intact following a potential relocation? And since Oakcrest was mentioned- And since Oakcrest was mentioned as a possible relocation site, it was built in 1955, what does retrofitting look like when bathroom and sink access is limited in the older wings, given the frequent and urgent needs of our youngest learners?
Earlier this week, we conducted a short parent survey asking two simple questions. First, if Fordham Early Learning students were relocated to Reddick Collier Elementary... Ms. Oak, can you pull the mic down? Thank you. If Fordham was relocated, in the survey we conducted, if Fordham was relocated to Reddick Collier, I'm sorry, Elementary School to operate for the next school year, would you transport your child to Reddick Collier location? The second question was, if there was a hub bus stop at the current Fordham Early Learning location, would you utilize the service to transport your children to Reddick Collier Elementary? We received 122 family responses, some of them having multiple students enrolled at our school. Out of those, 115 families, about 95% said no to both questions. That means families overwhelmingly would not follow Fordham if we moved to another campus to rely, or rely on the bus hub for their child's transportation.
With that being said, the data clearly shows that our families are not willing to relocate, which means moving would not solve the utilization challenge at Reddick Collier. While it might seem the new families could fill those seats, the truth is that part of Fordham's success is that we are one of a kind. We are the only school in the district that stops at second grade, the only true learning, early learning academy. Moving us onto a campus that already serves pre-K through fifth grade removes the uniqueness and, in effect, creates competition rather than collaboration. We would essentially be competing with the very site that we're sitting on, and at that point, it's not a partnership or a solution, it's a chess game.
On Tuesday evening, Dr. Campbell mentioned her love for early learning and her excitement about moving Fordham, I'm sorry, forward with the conversation of opening another location on the south side of Marion County.
Your time has expired.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Jennifer Beck?
I wanna know what she was gonna say about me.
Good morning, Jennifer Beck, B-E-C-K, Director of Early Learning and Proud Principal of Fordham Early Learning Academy. I stand before you today not just an advocate for Fordham Early Learning, but Fordham Early Learning on our current campus. The discussion today has been about north-end schools and better utilization, and as the Director of Early Learning, I certainly see the district's vision. I have to look at that all the time, and efficiency and fiscal responsibility are extremely important. However, in the process of addressing one challenge, we potentially then open up another problem and create some unrealistic obstacles for, or unintended consequences. First, let's consider, and, and we've already had some comment about it, licensing and compliance requirements. So although I heard $15,000 being mentioned to retrofit, what I know was not taken into that was that we are currently at a DCF-licensed facility. So change in location would completely open up a new application process, application fees, fee inspections, and potentially a lengthy timeline, but that's not really where the cost is, because those are relatively nominal. It is in the retrofitting and repair work, because any of those facilities that have been mentioned are older facilities, and when DCF comes in, they are measuring spaces, they are looking at those spaces, including sinks, including toilets, including the current condition of doors and cabinets, and when they want them fixed and repaired, they want them fixed and repaired, and you can't move forward with the process until that work is done. So that potentially causes an interruption to the students that we're currently serving. We are licensed for pre-K 3 and to serve those children in after-care for three-year-olds and VPK. Beyond those financial and logistical hurdles is something else very important, and two words resonate with me, and I'm trying to be quick, because I'm watching my time, parent choice. These parents have choice. Parents across the United States have choice where their children are going to school. If they wanted to go to their base school, they would have already have chosen their base school. Fordham was chosen for a reason, from the start of when they come through and they tour our campus, and you've heard families say, "We know every child by name. We do know them by name. We know their family, we know what's going on on the weekend," and that's intentional. That is what we talk about. That is building relationships. That is making sure that they are starting strong. The next thing I'd like to talk about, in addition to parent choices, going back to that survey that was mentioned, what the comments that they didn't see, which I saw, is they're not going to go back to their base school. Clearly in the comments, they're going to go to a private school, they're going to go homeschool, or they're going to look at charter schools. So I think that gives us pause to take a look at, is that really what we want to do, and is that really going to fill Reddick to capacity? I think the last thing I'd wanna say is reputation, because I'm watching our time. Reputation takes time, and we've got a great reputation going, and I'll stop where I'm at.
Okay, thank you, everyone who showed up and stayed this morning to share your, your comments. We sure do appreciate it. As board member, is there anyone who did not have an opportunity to fill out a form and would like to speak to the board? Okay, moving forward, board will open it back up for conversation.
I just have a, could we possibly break now? Because I know you said you wanted to break at 11:30, and it's 11:15, and then, so that we don't start a conversation that we then have to end really quickly? I don't know, that's just my quick question.
If, if that's the pleasure of the board.
Before we, before we break, I do wanna say this, because I won't be back on that second part.
You probably need to...
Yeah, sorry. Everybody's making eye, eye movements, but Ms. Throwbridge had a comment to say, and then Reverend Cummings will go to you.
I, I think that since we have 15 minutes before 11:30, that we need to at least open the, the conversation. I know that at least one board member has a time constraint. The input and feedback is really important to me to hear from all board members, and we have folks here that have been waiting, that need to get back to their schools probably, and I don't know how long we're gonna break for at 11:30, but that'll be another delay. So I would just assume at least get it up to 11:30 before we break, if that's okay.
Okay, Dr. Campbell, do you have a preference?
I agree, I did know. No, we had a board member with a time constraint, so that changes my thought on that.
So if it's okay with the board, we'll go ahead and work until 11:30, begin the conversation. Reverend Cummings, I'd like to give you the opportunity to share your thoughts first, since you're on a tight timeline.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am chair. I first, I wanna thank all of you that thought it not robbery to come out this morning and to address those concerns. Some of you were here on Tuesday night as well to address your concerns about Fordham. We, when we implemented Fordham as an early learning facility center, we, we asked you to do certain things to get that good reputation, to provide a service that would make a difference, and you guys are making a difference, and you have done those things. And Ms. Beck, you're absolutely right. It takes, it takes a minute to build a reputation, but in a very short time, you guys have done that, built a positive reputation. So I'm, I, I am, I am still listening to all of the comments and the concerns. I'm very concerned about moving Fordham as well. For me, I, I would not want it to be moved because of where it's centrally located. To sit it further north would be a hindrance and a potential problem for those parents. When you look at the map that was on the, the presentation, we have students coming from all over the county, and I think I heard a parent the other night said that they were driving from Marion Oaks. That's almost the whole county, that's driving the length from the south to north of the whole county to bring their kids to the school. So I just wanna let you know where I'm at with this. Thank you guys for coming out this morning. I have to leave. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Who would like to go next?
Chair?
Yes.
Seeing as I asked for this concept to come forward, would you mind if you gave me the purview to start the conversation? Because I know I'm the reason we kind of got here, and I just wanted to kind of share my thought pattern on everything since I was the one who initiated the conversation.
Go ahead, Dr. James.
Okay, thank you. So I, I am a parent who uses choice, and when this conversation came up, certainly, when I saw the presentation, it never would have occurred to me that Fordham was gonna come into the conversation. When I asked for us to address the north end, never in my wildest dreams did I think Fordham would play into it. And one of the key things that I've said to staff throughout the conversation has been, as a parent of choice myself, I feel like I represent parents of choice, and many of our staff are also parents who used choice throughout their child's K-12 experience. And it would be improper to ask a parent of choice to do something that we wouldn't do ourselves. And so I put myself in the position, and I said, "Well," and I've really been spending a lot of time talking through this in my head. Five years ago, prior to my kids starting kindergarten, if Fordham was at Reddick, would I have driven, would I have chosen Reddick instead of Madison Street where my kids go today? And I, I, I can't say with a definite yes that I would have done that, because we do our life in town, and so driving into town every day is a part of what we do every day, and so driving to Reddick to then drive into town would lengthen my day. And I think that there is a lot of value in representing ourselves as we have this conversation today and, and maybe beyond today. Would we do that? Because if we would not do that, to expect someone else to do it is hard. And certainly, based on the survey, you know, the kind of informal survey that was done, it appears that most of those parents are not willing to do it. So I've been mulling that over, and there's, there are some things that I, as a unique board member, look at, and, and I try to manage all of the pieces of a board member and the whole student experience, but also with the fiscal responsibility. And I look at where our, where are our facilities that do not have student enrollment, where they need to be to break even? Because the reality is, a school with 279 students is not breaking even. It's just not. And there has to be a balancing act. But also, Anthony, Spar, Eighth Street, Wyamina, Fessenden, Madison, and Reddick are probably all also schools, because those schools have 300 and 400 student enrollments, are also not breaking even. And so I, I started looking at this whole picture, because one of the things that has been in the back of my head, and as a board member, we get asked often, "Well, would, why aren't we, why aren't we addressing Eighth Street? Why isn't Eighth Street enrollment being addressed? Why isn't Madison Street's enrollment being addressed?" And I agree. I've even said in the very not distant past to executive staff, "If we had the money, I'd say put a wing at Madison, because there should be 600 or 700 kids at every school, because that is what's more financially responsible." Mr. Ayers would tell me we should never add capacity to choice schools, because that's, that's just not the best approach, and I hear that in my head all the time when I think those thoughts. So I, I think that we need to address this from a few different perspectives, because I think Fordham has been added to the conversation that was not originally in the conversation, but I do think that there is a value in the conversation. When I look around at, you know, could Fordham stay and a school come to Fordham? Could Fordham stay where it is? Because ultimately, big picture, as the board, we also have to find a place for alternative learning, and that's, that is a critical component to this, that is not really like the headline of the conversation, but I feel like is actually leading the charge of, of the conversation, is where are we going to put alternative learning? And so we have to find a place for them, which means we have to alleviate another place. And so when I look at this list of schools that have less than 400 enrollment, you know, Spar, Anthony, Reddick, and Fessenden, well, they're all a part of the other com, part of the conversation. So they're kind of, they're a part of this, but absent. Eighth Street is landlocked, and we can't make it larger, and also has a zoning pattern. Wyamina Park, we're doing a year-round school program at, and so the only school that's left then is Madison, which is a complete choice program, and so I don't even know if there's been a conversation about it, but as a Madison parent, it doesn't completely upset me for Madison to be on Fordham's campus, and essentially, everyone pre-K 3 through second would be a Fordham Fox, and in third through fifth grade, they would be a Madison Owl. I actually, it's because it's a pure choice program, and there is no zoning pattern. I think there's a, the plausibility that it could happen. I certainly don't know, but I, I completely appreciate everything that's been shared, and it is, it's hard. I, I have a really hard time justifying making a choice parent do something I wouldn't do myself. And I think that is the, probably for me, the premise of where I'm at with this conversation, is would I be willing to do it? Now, on the other side of that, my other thoughts for the north end, to me, I think we need to, it literally was a morning thought this morning, I don't know why we still have the Fiddler Springs campus as a standalone site. To me, Fiddler Springs needs to go to Reddick Collier, and we need to get rid of some fish capacity at Reddick Collier, maybe Building 10, and put Fiddler Springs at Reddick Collier and get rid of fish capacity there. I also love the idea of a center school for our most students who experience the most significant need. Why can't that be put at Reddick for everyone who's north of city center, or north of 326, or whatever, and put a center school at Reddick? No, should we bus kids from Stanton Rearsdale to Reddick? Absolutely not. But could we say that every kid who lives north of 35th Street and needs a center school would go to Reddick? I think that could be a possibility, because it's not lost on me that we have to fill Reddick or make its fish smaller and do something with the facility, because we ultimately have an obligation from our seats to identify and, and deal with that. So those are two solutions that I would offer for Reddick that could potentially at least offline some of the fish seats, would be a center school at Reddick and then moving Fiddlers. Like, I know we just talked about the roof at Fiddlers, but why are we replacing a roof where 10 people work? Like, we have a perfectly good school, why can't we just move them to Reddick? And then, of course, I have been a champion since the day I got on this board for the north end to get a new school. I was doing outside of the cafeteria at North Marion High. I don't think the north end has gotten anything new, maybe the cafeteria at North Marion Middle, some point in the early 2000s, Board Member Thrower may be able to help me on the, on the timeline here, but then we're going back to Reddick being built. And so I, until I am done sitting at this dais, whether that's next year or five years from now, will beat the drum that the north end deserves something new, and so I am, will continue to advocate that a new school at Spar is 100% at the top of my priority list, and Anthony going to Spar, but that has been something I've been maintaining. But I think that would be a way to maximize utilization at Reddick, maximize, maximize utilization at Spar. We would still need to work at Fessenden, but we have had conversations that we probably need to add a wing, because as that kind of west part of Ocala expands and they go to Fessenden zoning pattern, you know, continuing to be able to absorb that. So I feel like that kind of covers my thought pattern. It's a lot to digest, and I've really been trying to figure out how to, and trust me, it's not lost on me that I'm probably gonna start getting text messages from Madison Street parents who are like, "What in the world are you talking about?" But I said, "I'm a Madison parent. I would have no issue with my first grader being a Fordham Fox." The reason she's not is because we were at Madison before Fordham was a thing. And so, and this would also solve, where do the second graders go? Well, every second grader at Fordham then just rolls into Madison Street, which I don't think any Fordham Fox parent would have an issue with, because then they're guaranteed to have an ama, I mean, I bleed Madison Street colors. I love it. And so no parent would be mad at Fordham and trying to find a place, and we would be keeping these kids that Dr. Campbell has talked about. We've lost, we're losing these kids, because their parents are choosing another option. So that's a lot to digest, but those are just kind of, as I've been trying to come up with a solution that meets all of the variables, that's kind of where I'm at. I think I'll lay my pen down for now.
Well, we're, we're almost at our time break. Thank you, Dr. James. That is a lot to digest and a brand-new idea to me. Does anybody have something brief, brief as in, or three minutes?
No, I'll, I'll say something brief. I completely agree, but yet disagree on, first of all, I love the new idea. That's first statement. Second statement is, I believe the north end needs new construction. I personally, as been mulling this over as well, believe it needs to be at Fessenden, and Fessenden needs to become a K-8. That's what I think needs to happen. We have 38 acres at Fessenden. And then we consolidate some other way, either we're moving Anthony students to Reddick or Spar students to Reddick, we rezone all of that north end. We still need to only have three elementary schools, or two elementary schools and one K-8, is what I would see in the north side. That, I know that that's a longer-term strategy to actually build a classroom building at Fessenden, but I, the maintenance cost over 20 years are gonna be 20 million there, and, or, excuse me, 12 million there, and they have the most property, and they already have a gym built, and I... With air conditioning? That we just put in. So I see, because we had such extensive, extensive conversation about Fessenden not going away, then let's just go ahead and double down on that and say, "Let's make it a K-8," and then, then that frees up the North Marion Middle campus, and then we handle some of the other things that we've talked about here with North Marion Middle. That's only the beginning phase of what I'm thinking here, but you said something quick, so that's, so I agree and disagree. I agree we need to build on the north end. I don't believe it needs to be at Spar.
All right, with that, board, I wanna thank... All right. With that, board, I want to thank you for great conversation this morning as well as the community. We're going to break for recess. It's 11:29. We're going to take a 30-minute break and we will be back to, for further discussion. All right. Thank you.
Welcome back from recess. It is 12:02. We are continuing the conversation of Northside utilization. Before we went to recess, Dr. James had some ideas that she shared and Dr. Campbell chimed in. Board, I want to open it up to other members. Ms. Thor, would you like to share? Are you ready? You want me to wait just a minute while you try to finish your lunch?
That's fine. Thank you. You know, it just kind of goes to show that great ideas can come from anywhere at any time. And I believe, you know, Board Member James, you are in a very unique and wonderful position to be able to amplify the positive aspects of relocating Madison to the Fordham campus. It's, you know, for me, it's always been about getting the right people in the room to solve the problem, you know, and making sure that by solving one problem, we don't create, you know, three or four others and challenges. So I very much support that proposal. I hope that staff will look into the feasibility and we can hopefully have one challenge that has been concerning a lot of people off the list and have them be happy. And, you know, again, like I said earlier in my comments when we started this conversation, when your guiding light is doing what's best for kids and the families and the rest of folks that serve them, and you have the right people in the room and you talk it through, then you can come up with some, hopefully, very palatable solutions that solve a problem instead of creating more. So I'm happy with that part of the conversation so far. And when it comes to some of the other things, I continue to focus my mind on, you know, what do we have in our inventory that is currently kind of obsolete? You know, maybe the conversation just hasn't occurred for a while. The Fiddler's Building is, in my mind, you know, one of those options, just like we've talked about with attendance. And then just, you know, once you discover that the attendance legislation hadn't been reviewed since 1980, probably the location of Fiddler's hasn't been reviewed in quite a long time either. And with the clarification of what I think I know today, that if we think in terms possibly of more satellite-type district support to make sure that our school fish capacity does not look tempting to charter schools, then hopefully, again, that will allow us to be of better service to our kids, our families, our communities. And then arguably, we're a little more nimble as adults where if for some reason, you know, we see a big spike in population of students, then it's a little easier, I think, to relocate staff than it is to upend families and programs and things like that. So I would like to continue thinking in that direction. We have a very historic old school board building that is sitting there. And, you know, we know we need money. I don't think any of us expected that it was going to be a $64 million shortfall. But this board, you know, you have to remember now, you know, because we're so student-focused, we didn't want to reduce numbers. We didn't want to, you know, get rid of kindergarten pares. We added things to the staffing plan, which added money to the budget in spite of our former CFO saying recurrent costs. You know, we all heard the lecture. And it kind of came back to smack us a little bit. So I think in the future, it's good to really shift our mindset to really looking at obsolete and underutilized, you know, buildings and ones that aren't even serving students. And our employees are very, very important too. And I think of their safety. We have that whole block where Employment Services is that is not currently serving students. We have a very popular and landlocked Eighth Street and Osceola. And that, you know, block is probably also lucrative, you know, sales-wise. So I think that for myself, it's, I'm going to continue to try to think about areas like that to save money and increase services versus a lot of other disruptions to students and families and programs. You know, Hillcrest has 161 students. They are never going to pay for themselves. So again, we're not a business, we are a business, but we're not a business. So those are some of the things that I have taken from this conversation so far. I like where it's going. And I just look forward to, you know, getting the numbers in terms of the feasibility and viability of the Madison-Fordham option. I'm less concerned about Bridgeway at the moment. I know that we've talked off and on many years, you know, about what to do with this Old Forest High School. But in the meantime, you know, students, as evidenced by our return-to-base meetings this morning, you know, the program is thriving where it is. So I don't see that as much of a 911, you know, as I do some other things. So that's what I have for the moment.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Campbell. I want to open up to you because I only gave you three minutes before we went to lunch. So do you have anything you want to add to your comments?
I think I want to ask a clarifying question on the Madison-Fordham thing because I felt like what I heard was something different than what I just heard Ms. Thor share, but maybe I missed it. Is your expectation or thought at least be that Madison Street would contain, just as the school that it is, on the same location where it is, be a 3-5? And then Fordham, okay, that's what I thought that I heard. So that essentially the-
If I can clarify, you want me to please? My, what I know to be true, and Mr. Rios would have to get the numbers, is 600-ish
if you filled Madison back up and offered more 3-5 seats, still doesn't put Madison in a profit. When we go to site-based budgeting, Madison is going to operate at a loss.
Right.
So my, no, we have to find a campus for Bridgeway. Bridgeway would then operate on Madison's campus.
Okay.
That is my thought pattern. Okay, that's, so I don't know if that wasn't clear, but my thought pattern was that all of Madison goes to the campus of Fordham. Every student that's at Madison Street, who is a rising pre-K through second-grade student, would essentially live in the Fordham Fox world. And half of Fordham's campus would be exactly what it is now, and it services Fordham Foxes, and it's very developmentally appropriate, pre-K through two or pre-K three through two. And then they have the bridging ceremony at the end of the year at second grade, and they bridge into Madison. And essentially, if you look at the units right now, there would be seven second-grade units right now because Ms. Beck has three units, I believe, and then there are four at Madison. So you would have seven second-grade units that then bleed into seven third-grade units because every Fordham Fox would then be guaranteed a spot at Madison because it's on the same campus, which is the biggest barrier, I believe, in the current retention issues that Ms. Beck experiences with Fordham.
Right.
Because there's nowhere to go. So people bail out after kindergarten or first if they get a spot at Madison or Jones because they want their choice family. They want their child to be in choice. So we would eliminate completely Madison's experience on Madison's campus. And then Madison's campus, which has 460-ish fish seats, would then, which might change because there's their elementary versus secondary, but we do have some significant elementary behavior issues that would then be added more developmentally appropriate site. Because certainly, right now, there's not a playground here, right? And I mean, there's a small one over there by where we used to be, but they would be in a site that is appropriate. But also, the plan as it exists right now is taking Bridgeway to an elementary site. So there's not much difference between Madison and Fordham. They are both elementary sites. So we're taking essentially a secondary program and putting it at an elementary site. So there's a level of retrofitting that has to occur with either-
Either plan.
Plan.
Okay. So that helps me understand a bit more because I was still like, so what are we doing with Bridgeway? Because I understand that that hasn't been as much of a priority, but that is a huge priority from where I sit. Because the more we are able to get our district office staff on the same campus, the more we are able to be efficient in all of our meetings and need for all of that, and then even able to look in more duplication or, you know, what's taking too much time to do certain things, the more you have eyes on every district employee on the same campus. And I continue to say, while I appreciate that this was the quick fix for us last year, whenever we took on the program that we did and now have created Bridgeway, and all the things that we've seen this morning, the productivity and the success that they're able to have, this campus was decommissioned, whatever the word is, from DOE because students were not supposed to be here. And that's how we got approval to build Forest High School. We, the school board of the day, 27 years ago, got approval to build Forest High School where it is today because there weren't going to be students on this campus. And today, there are hundreds of students on this campus. So the more we change that whole narrative, and this just becomes district, our district offices, not even District East, because we're calling it District East, District West is kind of going to be sort of going away a bit soon too, as soon as we get that data center done. So this will be the district office, and we just continue to figuring out what that looks like here. Nevertheless, today's all about students. I appreciate and love the perspective that you have brought to the table, Dr. James, because I was trying to solve a geographical challenge, and you being a specific parent that would be impacted by the decision come with exactly why I think it's imperative to have parents on the board, including both of us. And so having all the diverse perspectives, but that wouldn't have been something that I would have considered because I wasn't in your shoes. So I love that idea. I still think that talking about what, how we still fill those seats at Reddick-Collyer is still needing to be a conversation we try to talk through today. Because, I mean, we're too late in the school year to do a whole rezoning plan for just the North End. I, we have, I think we have to do a full year of that, if I'm not mistaken. Mr. Ayers has to be a full year, yes. So we're too late in the game to actually make that, if we were to just rezone North End, which wouldn't totally give us what we need anyway, because we still have, Reddick is the main one that is underutilized, and Anthony at their low enrollment as well. Then what do we do? Do we land bank a location? And then I'm, this is going to be the last thing I'm going to say about this right now, because I have floated the idea out about the South Side early learning. Personally, this is just going to be something I'm thinking about. I like the idea of Fordham Early Learning Academy being what we call all of our early learning academies.
Oh, 100%.
And so Fordham Early Learning Academy, like originally when I was thinking we'd put it at Oakcrest to be Fordham Early Learning at Oakcrest, or Fordham Early Learning at Reddick, or Fordham Early Learning, whatever. I think the name Fordham can just, this is personal, whatever, just thinking it through. But then this is what I said to Dr. Brewer and Mr. Whitehouse. I said, okay, so then, Fordham Early Learning, we would, we would then have an early learning academy potentially in 2027, when our Lake Weir Middle students, I know I've already said this, but here are my whole thought on it. When the Lake Weir Middle students, hopefully, if the federal government will ever reopen and we can get our letter from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Commission, we'll be able to actually break ground on that site in Silver Spring Shores for Lake Weir Middle School. But when that happens, hypothetically, we should be able to be 2027 opening that Lake Weir Middle Campus that then has the new Lake Weir Middle, that probably won't be called Lake Weir Middle, but whatever. And then we'll have that site off of Sunset Harbor Road where we will then need to be moving the Bellevue Elementary students into. But if we can go ahead and also set it up for an early learning academy there in conjunction with the Bellevue Elementary students, because it should be fish capacity for 1,200 or so. So, I mean, we should be able to do both simultaneously in 2027 on that campus. And then we start talking about, once those Bellevue Elementary students go back to their school, then maybe there's another site in the South Side, potentially a Stanton Weersdale, that then goes into the Lake Weir Middle Campus. And we offline the Stanton Weersdale Campus because, I mean, and I know the Lake Weir Middle Campus is old. I know it is too. I know it needs to have a lot. We didn't put air conditioning in it. We didn't, you know, I mean, I understand that. But that's where, in my thought process of early learning, we're saying 2027 state appropriation and federal earmark potentially for that early learning for 2027 on that campus. And anyway, so thinking both sides, I think it's important that we not, there were people in the community that spoke on Tuesday evening that believed that we wanted to close our early learning academy. And I am doubling down on absolutely not. We're going to have two, if not three or four, because everything we know, and this is the other thing.
Everything we know is that families who have choices like that we offer aftercare for VPK kids. So how do we do more of that? And where do we do more of that? And I appreciate the data requests that board members have had because we're seeing the spots potentially that we could add more VPK classrooms on our elementary sites right now, because that's also something we talked about. Because that, we, we know that our early learning in Marion County struggles, kindergarten readiness struggles, and we have been successful at solving part of that. So let's continue to do that even more and in greater ways that we can. I understand the funding. I get it. That's the other piece we're working on, legislative requests. And we're trying to tackle this from every end we can. But those people that are willing to pay, those people that are willing to pay, why aren't we offering more services that they pay for? And I know that's a licensure thing. I know that's DCF. I understand all of that. But how do we do more of that? Okay. I think that covers most of my, and I already said about Pheasanton becoming our K8, and then that would offline the North Middle, North Marion Middle Campus. That's like longer down the line, but that's what my, the K8 would be at Pheasanton, and we would rezone Middle School so that some of those kids in the Anthony area would go to Fort King, some in the lower Pheasanton might go to Howard, and then we would have Fort McCoy and Pheasanton as our K8s that service the North End. Okay.
Got it.
That was a lot.
That was a lot. Okay. All right. Board, this is probably been one of our, for me personally, a fun, I'm going to say a fun board meeting. Like, it's been a great opportunity for everybody to share ideas, and the ideas have been so different than what has come before the board previously. So with that, I will lead into my ideas a little different also. So after I had my briefing and looked at what the district presented, I have a lot of respect for that, the people that put that plan together, the work that went into that plan. And so with that, I still struggled with us moving Fordham. A lot of background in early childhood, a push for Marion County Public Schools. We've already identified that early learning literacy is a priority for us. We're lacking that for the kindergarten readiness. And so it just felt counterproductive when we're hearing that a majority of the parents at Fordham do not want to move. They don't want to travel any further. So the next thing that entered my mind after I decided I really don't want to move the students at Fordham, I started, I could hear Dr. James in my head with "Northside pride, Northside pride." So I started, you know, you're looking at numbers and trying, because somebody is going to be disrupted. Some children, some families, there's going to be some disruption. And so what does that look like, and how can we minimize that? And so looking at our North End schools, my idea would be, let me share the capacity real quick. We've got North Marion Middle School is at about 70% capacity. And we've already said that Reddick-Collyer is at 46% capacity. North Marion High School is at 72% capacity. And so what if we looked at, for North Marion Middle, shifting our sixth graders and making Reddick a K through six? That would put us, there are 266 sixth graders, and there's 318 currently enrolled at Reddick. So that gives us a pretty solid number for Reddick. Next, taking our seventh graders from North Marion Middle School, which puts us, that's 233 students. The eighth graders, there's 218 students. Moving them to North Marion High School, who was only at 72% capacity also. If we made those changes, we're still keeping those students in the North Side. They're still in their communities. And that opens up North Marion Middle School for Bridgeway Academy, which in my opinion, I think is a better move. There's better facilities there as far as a gym and more things that are productive for the age level that's going to be moving there. That's the short version of what I'm thinking about. And so I'll just, I'll pause here to see if there's any concerns or interest in that idea.
Well, Chair, I guess the only barrier, I would think, is that you would have, you would have a significant portion of those sixth graders who would attend three schools in three years. There's Spar Elementary, they go to Reddick for sixth grade, and then they would go to North Marion High School for seventh grade.
But then they would stay seventh, eighth, ninth.
Yeah, but why would, they would go to Reddick for one year. I just, I don't-
Like I said, there's going to be a group of kids that are displaced, no matter what option we choose. This is one option that I spend time putting, you know, thinking-
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would be more palatable to put sixth grade at all four of the North End Elementary Schools than I would be palatable to put all of sixth grade at one school. But I just don't, I personally think it is a transportation nightmare to drive a kid from Aklewaha to Citra. And if you are a kid who is a behavior kid, which is why you're in an alternative setting, and I put you on the bus in Aklewaha at 7:00 a.m., and you're not arriving at North Marion Middle School until 8:30, that is a really long time to transport a student who has a behavior problem. We're already, if we only have one alternative school, we're already transporting them a significant distance that they live on the outskirts. I don't think there's a, I don't think it is advantageous to make it even longer, personally.
Okay. Yeah.
Board Member Thor. And, you know, the brainstorming is so important to try to think this through. I would also encourage Mr. Jones to have some voice in this conversation, because one of the potentially appealing things about Madison would be you've got a crosskey right next door. You know, you have that whole park there.
Absolutely.
You know, that's a lot of opportunity.
Space.
Yep, it's a lot of space. It's also an in-town location, so it's closer for, you know, I'll just say, Mayor Marciano's been amazing so far. He's been over here multiple times. So we want access. You know, what these kids need, I would just offer more than anything else is just strong, sane adult role models.
Well, and city bus stops. So something that got brought to my attention on the break was there's city bus stops at Madison. There is not at Fordham's site, and obviously not at North Marion. So we could potentially utilize city transportation for a Madison location.
No doubt.
But also, it's very close to Mary Sue Rich as well. I mean, it's very close to Mary Sue Rich. Can we ask Mr. Jones to maybe pop over? I don't, I hate to put him on the spot, but also I really don't hate it because I think we need to make a decision. If we don't make it now, we're going to have to make it in the November 6th board session ahead of school choice opening, if that's what, if that's what the timeline is. And so I'd love to hear his perspective. I don't know if someone-
Yep. He's, Mr. Whitehouse is going to contact him.
Thank you.
Because the school choice window opens November 10th, right?
Right.
Yes.
And that would be our request, is that we would come back to you on November 6th to have some kind of decision before that window opens.
Yes. Were you finished with your thought, Ken?
I was just going to say, as we begin to check things off the list, I'm wondering if the board, if we have consensus about the Madison-Fordham opportunity. Can we at least go that far?
I love it. So I want to preface everyone by saying, as many Fordham parents have emailed us about Fordham, now granted, I think that is a much bigger ask than Madison to Fordham, we were going to have Madison staff and Madison parents reach out. I feel, I feel like I've really spent time sitting in this and like thinking and putting myself in the shoes because I am in the shoes. And I feel pretty confident with the decision, but I'm going to hear perspectives that we haven't heard yet. And so I think we could have consensus for the day, but I wouldn't want to say that we're making a decision ahead of listening to what the community would have to say about it. I think if that's a fair assessment of it, I don't know. But I do imagine they're going, I mean, they're all teaching right now, so they're probably not watching the workshop, nor was this on the agenda. So most of them are probably not even, you know-
They're not even on the radar.
They're going to say all the reasons, anyway. What I don't want it to become, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to just interject there.
Well, I think maybe I didn't explain myself properly. I would see consensus that this is what the board thinks is the best idea. And we do want to hear feedback, you know. It's not something we're going to vote on. We just give consensus. It's not a votable item, but we certainly want-
Oh, correct. It's an operational decision.
Yes. We certainly want to make sure we get to hear, you know, from everybody. There may be a nugget that, you know, does make us change our mind, but I just am trying to bring together where we are. And if we're all thinking this is a pretty darn good idea, then hopefully, as we get our calls, we'll be able to share that.
Mr. Jones is here.
That was-
Good afternoon, Mr. Jones. By chance, you didn't happen to be watching the work session, did you?
I did hear bits and pieces, and I did hear the last part of it, the conversation.
Okay. Can you, can you get the mic closer to you? It's hard for me to hear. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I did hear the last part conversation when it dealt with Bridgeway and the possible alternatives to being here on our site. I do like being centrally located. That's going to be key because, like you say, we come from all over the district, and that has been challenging in the outskirts. So if it's challenging in the outskirts being here located to get to the North End from Marion Oaks or someplace like that, that would be even- from Marion Oaks or someplace like that, that would be even more challenging. So being centrally located would be very important. Space is what we need. We need space. There's some things that the board has asked as far as the non-irregious, the irregious and the separation, that additional space would allow for us to do things like that.
Okay, and do you feel that Madison Street would have that space, give you the space you need?
Yes, yes, it would.
Okay. All right, board, open it up for any other questions. First of all, Mr. Jones, thank you for stopping what you were doing and coming over and joining us. We appreciate you taking a minute to come over and share with us what is important to you.
You are, thank you.
Thank you. I don't know that I have any other questions for Mr. Jones, does anybody else? But we just, yeah, go ahead, I think.
I don't have another question for you, other than, you know, thank you and getting over here so quickly, because until we make a decision, this is going to be the topic.
Yes.
So, and I want to ensure that we get a chance, obviously, to hear from the Madison parents and so on, but I would like to make sure that we have this on the list to bring back and quickly, and that if the board, you know, is sitting here right now, and I think Board Member Cummings, his big concern was for Fordham not to be moved, so that would take care of that objection, and that if we are feeling pretty unified, I think that that's just gonna help move things along.
I agree.
Chair, we have the Niola Day on October 31st. Could we add this to that, that day, just so we're not waiting so close into the choice window?
We can. I transparently, it's also Halloween, so I know for me personally, I am going to have a hard stop, because I am going to trick or treat with my small children. So I will work until five or six o'clock at night, but I am going to stop and go trick or treating with my children.
And can we put that first?
And I imagine all the parents who would come from Madison, who want to talk in the meeting, are going to also be trick or treating with their children, so I just want to make sure that that's on the radar. Because I don't know how long, sometimes policy goes an hour, you're muted, sometimes policy goes two hours, and sometimes it goes a long time.
We're trying to push two days of policy into one to get it done. I have seen in the past where two days was barely sufficient. I would not suggest adding anything else on there unless you can keep that something else very, very contained.
Or for additional day that we... Right, I would say we would add a day. I think...
Well, we can't add a day, I looked at the calendar, I mean, we can't add a day at this point except for the work session that already exists. I mean, it would have to be the week of November 3rd at this point.
I mean, for policy.
Right. Because... Oh, no, we're keeping policy on the...
No, it's on the 31st. He said he may need to add a, that it's a challenge to do it all in one day. Well, I want us to be able to bring this back to the table, and so I think that is a priority over...
Over our policies?
Over all policies, yeah.
I'm gonna disagree with that. I'm sorry. Our statutory responsibility is policy, and right now, we have policies that do not align with the state law that has just been passed, so...
Well, and I'm not asking you to push it off for six months, I'm asking for a week.
Okay, so when are we gonna do policies, then?
Could I, could I offer a potential solution?
Pardon interruption.
Thank you. Yeah, you're good. Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Mr. Jones, thank you very much.
She's trying to run Bridgeway Academy. Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Could we just, I think what we want to hear is parent feedback, right? About Madison Street.
Yes.
That is what we want to hear. Could we not just have a town hall where none of us talk and we all sit, kinda like we did for Osceola when many of us were in the audience, and we sat in the eye, I mean, I think the three of us were there that day when we talked about Osceola, and I don't even remember what that was about, but we had a meeting in Osceola's, okay, maybe the combination, right. Okay, I couldn't remember. So could we not, could we not just have a, I dare even mention that again, could we not just have a town hall where our staff facilitates answering questions from Madison Street parents, and the board is able to sit and listen so that we have, we can gather all of that information, and then we can go into the November 6th work session having all of that information, and then information from staff to then make an informed decision? I, I think that we could absolutely do that. Here are the questions that would need to be answered in that town hall, for sure. They would want to know if their name is gonna be able to stay intact. They would want to know if they're gonna have separate administrations. They're gonna want to know if they get to have two art classes and two music classes and all the, so as long as all of those answers can come out in a town hall and y'all will have those answers ready to go, absolutely. Because we, I can tell you, based on the feedback we're getting right now, and based on the feedback we received from Eighth Street Osceola Combo, which fiscally still makes the most sense, just throwing that out there, but based on the feedback that we received, those are gonna be the primary questions that we're gonna get. Are they gonna get to keep exactly what they have? Are they gonna get to keep their school name? Are they gonna get to keep their same administration? And if we can answer all those questions, sure, town hall sounds good to me.
Ms. Beck has volunteered to have that town hall at the Fordham campus.
I think that would be a perfect location for it.
That would be very nice.
Terrific. Can I comment on something else? So, I wanted to say that while it's possible that it may not be the direction that we go today, if we were to do a 612 school, which I am not in support of in Dunellen, I think I've said that a few times, I am not support of a middle high in Dunellen. I could be in support of a middle high on the north end. It's different. People on the north end stay on the north end, they have north end pride, it's, north end is a large landmass that everybody considers themselves north end, very different than what we have happening in Dunellen. So I appreciate your bringing at least the idea of that forward, and perhaps as opposed to the Pheasanton thing that I brought up, making that a K eight, we do go a middle high at north, on the North Marion High Campus, or I don't know how that even work, but somehow like that, maybe that's the new, it still doesn't solve our elementary challenges, but I appreciate your bringing that forward. I don't know that it's completely the direction with the sixth graders going to Reddick. I do think that is a little awkward, but making a middle high at North Marion, I would, I would support that if that's a direction we want to move in. I literally said the idea to Dr. Brewer in our meetings. I said, I just really just had a lot of disdain for option two. I didn't like option two. But I said, if you're looking to try to do something with that, I would say make North Marion a North Marion Middle High. But again, that's costs money, and it's a, it's a longer out conversation, most certainly. But I think, I think to Board Member Thrower's point, we need to, I think, make a decision about Madison and Fordham for now, and what we're doing next, and then we need to move on to the next chapter, because I'm committed to sitting here today until we finish talking about the north end concepts. Because that was actually the purpose of today's conversation. We've obviously, in our own just conversations, derailed that a bit, but I would like to get into, what are we doing with Reddick? What are we doing with Spar Anthony? And so to Board Member Thrower's point there, I'd like to do that.
And we can't really make that decision till we know that the Madison-Fordham Bridgeway is going to fly, you know? I heard from, we all heard from Principal Jones, that, you know, he's, would be good with going to Madison Street, so that takes care of that. But then it's, it all connects, you know? So...
Well, but I think we can say, as a board, are we against Fordham going to Reddick?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so then I think we can move forward, because respectfully, we all agree that that is not, that is not how we want to solve Reddick. So we can talk about other ways we're gonna solve Reddick, because we know Fordham is not gonna solve Reddick.
And I think that provides some reassurance to Fordham that that is now officially and publicly off the table now. It remains to be seen whether or not Madison Street will be joining you, but if I'm hearing things correctly, that appears to have, that option appears to have strong appeal and support from the board and also from Fordham. It sounds like you'd happily welcome them, it solves problems instead of creates problems. So hopefully, once Madison Street parents have a chance to ask their detailed questions, which they totally need to have the opportunity to do, then we can bring this together completely. But that conversation needs to occur very soon.
I would agree. I mean, I would, I guess as a Madison parent myself, to give some context and perspective, Fall Festival is next Thursday, so until next Thursday, the PTA at Madison's very busy. So I would say that the PTA, which is a very involved PTA, and fundraises a significant amount of money, I think they're going to want to be very involved in this conversation, and to advocate on their behalf, it's actually next Friday, it is next Friday, and so they, I would say that it would not be appropriate to have a town hall prior to next Friday, because they're going to be consumed with focusing on Fall Festival, because it is what the PTA does. I mean, that PTA, I don't have the exact number, but I mean, we're talking north of forty, fifty, sixty thousand dollars a year annually it raises for Madison Street, and so I want to respect the work that they do. That being said, I would say that we would have to look into the week of the 27th, that earliest to schedule a town hall, personally.
Well, and in the meantime, like Fordham did, you know, you did a quick survey, it was two questions.
Yes.
How about sending something similar out to the Madison parents, and as a result of today's conversation, we wanted at least start to take a temperature, and that then we'll hopefully have a date.
I, again, I want to just clarify, I know that I had asked a clarifying question previously about the idea here, but would the idea, again, because I just want to make sure I'm sure on this, that the students that are currently Madison Street students, that are VPK kindergarten first and second, potentially, they would become Fordham early learning students. They would be Fordham Foxes till their second grade, and then third, third through fifth grade would be called...
Madison Street.
Madison Street at Fordham, or whatever we're gonna call them.
Well, I think...
Because Madison Street, anyway, go ahead.
Well, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I think, and I could be wrong, but I'm pretty sure Madison Street would still carry the school grade, because Madison Street is the third through fifth.
Okay.
I do think there is some legal logistical that if all of a K two rolls into a three five, they get a school grade, but the school, I think, would still be Madison. Like, I think it would be, especially to your point, because I agree, and I actually have an idea for Reddick, but I think it would be Fordham Early Learning at Madison Street, and Madison Street's new address would be where Fordham is. And then when we do one in the south, it would be Fordham Early Learning at Stanton Weersdale, and if we did one at the north, Fordham Early Learning at Reddick Collier. And Fordham would be essentially a program that we have constructed that lives at a, at a school site that carries the grade.
Okay. I mean, I just, again, trying to say, all the things that all the Madison Street parents that watch this back are gonna be asking, they're gonna want to know, does my child still go to Madison Street if they're in first grade right now and they're going second grade next year? Is it still called Madison Street?
They are in, in the Fordham Early Learning.
In the Fordham Early Learning Academy at Madison Street.
Academy at Madison Street.
Okay.
And I don't, I mean... I see Mrs. Beck is nodding, so I think we're good.
Okay. Just, again, I think all that clarification is helpful, so everybody gets the full picture of what it is that all the questions they're gonna be asking us, because they're gonna be asking them.
Yes. One more?
Just keeping in mind, and I, and I think it's, I agree with what's being said, but just keeping in mind that it is a tremendous honor, you know, to Mr. Fordham, and I see that continuing if as we move along in this, the succeeding schools will also be called Fordham Early Learning.
Yes, yes.
And I would love to hope that the Fordham family agrees as well. I think that that's, just as a courtesy.
Yeah, I mean, I actually, I mean, because one of the conversations Mr. Whitehouse and I had at our lunch break was like, well, there's a lot of families on the north end not using VPK, and there's a lot of, obviously, a lot of pre-K3 not happening on the north end. Why wouldn't we do Fordham and duplicate Fordham at Reddick? We have a capacity issue at Reddick. Why would we not soft start a small Fordham program at Reddick? Fordham Collier, you know, Fordham Collier, Fordham Early Learning at Reddick Collier, and do a soft start of a small program? It's not gonna address all of the FISH capacity at all, but it would start, and then we can piece in a few other pieces, which I want to get into, but I actually, I see this expanding the Fordham name and creating a model program and school for how we do early learning, in my opinion. Couldn't agree more, which is why I was saying Fordham Early Learning Academy on south side and whatever to be named. I love, I don't know if I said it, but like that whole, I mean, to me, Stanton has got to come up, and it could be, yes, all of that for another conversation at another time. Yes.
And that is on the list, that is on, that's coming.
It's coming.
It's coming.
There's a lot.
There was a big push, there was a big push and a lot of effort that went into what we're seeing today, and so that same sort of effort has to go into the south side.
So we could then schedule a town hall for the week of the 27th.
So, Dr. Brewer...
Also, Fordham has their trunk or treat next Friday as well, so it's the same as Madison, so that works out well.
Okay.
Dr. Brewer, what will your calendar allow?
We have a board meeting on the 28th. Oh, we could comment that day.
We also have a town hall gathering tonight that we make...
And we also have an ICROC meeting at Fordham.
Could I offer that we would do the town hall on the 27th ahead of our board meeting? On the Monday before our board meeting, is that what you're saying? On the day before our board meeting. I think it might give opportunity for people to really get lots of questions asked and air concerns ahead of a board meeting. Great idea.
Can we ask Ms. Beck to come to the podium, please? Since it's her facility.
Since it's your school. Ms. Beck, thank you for staying.
No problem, happy to do it. I'm invested in our schools and obviously in Fordham, so, you know, we are happy to host, love the idea of a town hall meeting, and although obviously I just have a few parents and grandparents left with me, I think that it would be a great sell to our families. It would certainly answer that direct connect question. So as far as days, we agree not wanting to do it next week with some big events coming up at both schools. We would be open to Monday, the 27th, if that worked with everyone. I see that fine with us. Also, you guys have a board meeting on that Tuesday. Wednesday also would work for us as well. I don't see anything major on our calendars.
Our publication date for the 24th Ocala Gazette would be yesterday?
The 24th?
For the 24th, it's next Tuesday, right? Or next Wednesday, right?
No.
It was the week after.
It has to be, it would publish on the, if next...
But a town hall doesn't follow the same...
Correct, a town hall doesn't have to be published.
But I mean, if we were to publish, if we were to publish it.
Okay.
Yeah.
But still, we'd meet the deadline, because we could publish on the 29th, we could publish on the 22nd for the...
I was asking about the Ocala Gazette. We have different deadlines because, so it's not the same as...
But we don't have to publish a town hall.
Okay, perfect.
And we wouldn't be participating. The board would just simply go and sit in the audience like we did for the Osceola. We wouldn't sit up at the front, this is this operational town hall, we're simply there to listen, like we did for our Osceola.
Okay.
So we're saying the 27th?
I think doing it ahead of the board meeting is wise.
I agree.
Would, theoretically...
It could relieve a lot of pressure. And so 5:30-ish, Ms. Beck, what would, would be a good time for you and your team?
What time does your MAP end?
I was just gonna say, MAP ends at 6:00. So if we could, I mean, we can make 5:30 work, we can make some adjustments into other rooms, so really, it's whatever you think would bring out the most families, either 5:30 or 6:00 would work for us.
Do you have a lot of MAP students left when you get to the end? Like, what does that look like?
Well, it dwindles down, and we, we do have other DCF license rooms that we could move kids into. We have classrooms licensed, so we could move them into those spaces and just communicate early, you know, where they're going to be. So if 5:30 works, then we'll just work around that.
Families, what do you think is better, 5:30 or 6:00?
Well, I imagine there are Fordham families who would want to potentially be a part of the conversation.
I think they would.
If they're not picking up until after 5:30, traditionally, it would be a barrier for them, for sure, as well as parents who have kids in MAP at, I think doing it at 6:00 would just be more appropriate, but that's just...
Well, the other town hall gatherings that we've had are all scheduled at 5:45, so it might be consistent.
I like that.
I was thinking that too, Dr. Brewer, because that's what the standard's been.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, 5:45, okay? All right, Ms. Beck, if 5:45 works for you?
On October 27th, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that sounds great, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beck. Okay. Okay, one decision halfway down. I would like to firm up, either in individual conversations, maybe we could all send Dr.
I would like to firm up either in individual conversations, maybe we could all send Dr. Brewer some guiding questions of things we would want to make sure are answered ahead of that town hall. I don't know that we need to hash that out publicly, but questions I know as a parent I would have, just to make sure that we're leading in with a PowerPoint and some answers, you know, operationally, to put some. And I think it's important too that ahead of a survey, that survey encompasses some information, like you're guaranteed to have this spot, you know. We kind of hash out some of those heartburn questions that would come. So we don't have to do that now necessarily, but we could certainly all communicate with you all privately about that.
That's, may I speak?
Yes, ma'am.
That's, that's if, you know, we think getting a survey out sooner than later would help relieve some pressure too.
I would put money that the PTA is going to do their own similar to Fordham if we do not do it. So if it does not come from Mr. Christian's office, I would put money that the school will do one internally. And they may still do one internally, but it would certainly show foresight from operations if we were to be proactive in trying to get something out in a timely fashion.
You know, in the spirit of wanting, authentically wanting the feedback.
Yes.
We can do that.
Okay. But I was watching, I was watching Kevin's taking notes and so.
We can do that, and we would rather do it than it be an informal survey, just to ensure it's valid.
And then whatever doesn't get asked or actually new questions, they can be asked at the town hall.
Yes.
Two opportunities.
All right.
Okay. So then on to Reddick?
Yes.
Okay.
Or sorry.
So I would like to maintain, I don't know, and Ms. Bumbach could share, where are we in this roofing project for Fiddler's? I know, I think it's in the plan for this year maybe, or there's, but I really, I, this, I call it a shower moment, but I just realized, like, why are we putting money into a facility that has like ten or fifteen adults in it? So there is certainly room at Reddick, even with any other programmatic decisions for these adults to come work. I actually think Building Ten is a great place because they do have children come to Fiddler's to do evaluations, et cetera. And the fence is already there to kind of separate Building Ten from the rest. So I would offer the, the suggestion that we move Fiddler's Springs to Reddick Collier's campus. That would be like my first request or recommendation. I don't know if Facilities has anything to chime in about that, but I think in the spirit of trying to offline facilities that are not maximizing our resources, maybe could we, could we stop their chair and kind of just go item by item? Or I don't know how you want to go about that. Sure, and I, I honestly don't have, I don't see any information on Fiddler's, so I don't.
There isn't.
We don't have any, and so I really can't, I can't make an educated comment on that.
Dr. Brewer, do you have any information about Fiddler's you could share briefly?
So I, I know a few things, and of course, Yvonne is here and Mr. Ayers can also answer, because I've asked him a couple of questions today. So Building Ten has a hundred and thirteen student stations. So that, that's kind of what we're looking at for, speaking of students in that area. I also asked, and I sent all of you through your work cell phones, a, a clear definition of what they're looking for for the School of Hope. And that's coming from Brian Moore, the General Counsel for FADS. But something we need to be just cautious of, and Mr. Ayers can elaborate, is any possible audits if we're looking, if it looks as though we're hiding FISH spaces. So I think that's just something, you can read the language to determine, to interpret it yourself, but that's something we should be just aware of.
May I speak?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I've got that pulled up, and at the very last paragraph, it finally gives a little bit of a definition. For purposes of this paragraph, the term underused vacant or surplus facility means an entire facility or portion thereof, which is not fully used or is used irregularly or intermittently by the school district for instructional or program use. Well, Fiddler's is certainly a program.
Yes, it is.
We certainly evaluate kids with it and so on, so I wouldn't say in this particular scenario, we'd, we'd be hiding anything. I think it could be potentially a nice fit.
And for context, it's one point two miles away. So the Fiddler's Springs office is one point two miles away from Reddick Collier Elementary School.
It is very rundown.
It is very rundown, it is a very old facility. And so moving into, doing a little bit of retrofit, we'd have to do some toilet and sink additions, changes in Building Ten, because there was tiny people in Building Ten. I don't know when the last time you all were in Building Ten at Reddick. I was telling, at the break, I was sharing some with some of the Fordham families. It is if the doors closed in a time capsule in Building Ten truly, like chalkboards and chalk, like very just, it's, it has been preserved well, but it, it looks old because there are just very old things in there. The sinks are very short and the bathrooms are very small, so there are some plumbing things, I'm sure Mr. Duncan would say we'd have to address for adults to occupy the space. But I'm sure that would cost less than a new roof. He shakes and said, yes. And so we've already budgeted a new roof at Fiddler's Springs, so if this costs less than the new roof at Fiddler's Springs, to me, it's still a win. And then we're not paying to electric bills, because right now we're paying for electric and other maintenance at Fiddler's Springs.
Okay. I can get on board with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, Dr. Brewer, do you have a thought on it, or?
I, I think the only, the only thing we'd want probably legal advice on is just that language, just to make sure that moving forward, our language meets, that we could put office spaces in that building to remove the student stations and we would not be in, we wouldn't jeopardize.
Fish capacity of the school.
We would.
Which is what we currently have at Fordham with all the offices anyway.
Right.
And at MTI, I mean respectfully, MTI.
Here.
Here, right? I mean, Ridgeway, whatever, but like, it's hard to keep up with the names.
All the names.
So then my other, my second component for Reddick, seeing as if Fordham is not going there, I would like, I have essentially, in my opinion, there are, there are two next steps. We either rezone some of SPAR to go to Reddick and then move Anthony up to SPAR and eventually rebuild at SPAR, and then you're offlining Anthony. Because almost all of SPAR could go to Reddick as it exists right now, truly. Now, Mr. Ayers and I have hashed this out, because I said, well, why can't we send some of those SPAR kids to Fort McCoy? Well, hardly any, if you look at the SPAR zoning map, the, the number of students living west of, never, east of SPAR is not a lot. Most of the kids live right around SPAR or to the west of SPAR. So rezoning kids to Fort McCoy, because Fort McCoy obviously has capacity as well, but there's not a lot of kids from SPAR that we could push to Fort McCoy School. A handful, but not significant. But there are more that live closer to Reddick and they can all fit at Reddick. I still think though, Anthony can't take on a ton more kids because its capacity is still pretty low. And I would, I am disagreeable with the capacity at Anthony, I just don't think it's ideal from a budgetary standpoint. So I, I still wouldn't really be on board with then taking the rest of the SPAR kids and bringing them to Anthony. One, because Anthony's facility has significant needs still, but two, it's still not at a capacity that is going to be financially stable. So to me, that's option one, is some of SPAR kids go to Reddick and then Anthony kids go to SPAR with the hope and promise that we're going to rebuild somewhere up there for elementary. Or we put a, a Hillcrest-type program for K-five learners, pre-K-five learners at Reddick for everyone who lives north of Thirty-Fifth Street essentially. So if your child is north of Thirty-Fifth Street and is experiencing an educational journey that needs a most restrictive environment, we would put them at the program at Reddick. And then we would put another program at Oakcrest.
At where?
At Oakcrest, because Oakcrest has twenty-five percent capacity. So theoretically, Oakcrest is on the hot list for, for this, for this cohabitation. So unless we fill Oakcrest as well, which again, we can put up what we've done here, what we've done at Fordham, you essentially separate the spaces and we cohabitate our own spaces. That's how I look at it. Either someone's going to come cohabitate with us or we're going to cohabitate ourselves. So we put a, a school similar to Hillcrest at Reddick for everyone north of Thirty-Fifth Street. And then we put a school similar to Hillcrest at Oakcrest for everyone who's in the middle of town. And then eventually, in theory, if we take talk to impact what Dr. Campbell has talked about with Lake Weir Middle, we could then even talk about then on the south end of town, finding space then for another. So then again, kids are not riding the bus for an hour to get to a specialized program. And we have essentially a north, a central, and a south opportunity for students who are experiencing some of the most significant delays. That would fill, that would at least give effort to filling Reddick, it would give effort to filling Oakcrest and eliminate the barrier there. It would solve some of our programmatic issues that we're experiencing with students who are still in a self-contained setting, but at a base school and are experiencing behaviors that are just not reflective or appropriate for the environment. I think that is the most appropriate next step. I would prefer not to rezone SPAR, but I think, I just wanted to make sure that I threw that out there. But I would love to see us programmatically put a center school at Reddick, house Reddick, house Fiddler's, and theoretically expand Reddick's offerings to have a start of a Fordham Early Learning at Reddick and offer some pre-K three programs.
Go ahead, Nancy.
Okay. Nancy actually went. Not the, alrighty then. All right. Couple of things that popped into my mind right away was, I, I really think that there is a need for the type of ESE program for our youngest learners that is north of, of town. But I think that it's going to be really important to get both transportation and Anna Williams Jones, our ESE Director, if, if they believe that, that Reddick is the right spot, or do they have another idea? But, but I, from what you've proposed so far, I like it, I agree with it. As far as Oakcrest is concerned, I think we're getting a little ahead of ourselves. We have a brand-new principal there that is in the midst of trying to turn that school around. According to my understanding, she is committed, she attended Oakcrest herself, so that's a big old monkey wrench to throw into that deal. So it would be my preference to take that under advisement at the moment.
Yeah.
And, okay, be a little more, just step by step. Getting back to the idea of a, of a traditional central office, I believe there's no such thing anymore. Central office folks used to spend pretty much their whole day at the central office. Wasn't that our complaints?
It was, it one hundred percent was.
Yes, and I see a huge shift over the years to a very dynamic, school-connected central office. If the south end is your zone, then, and if we are able to use the, the capacity that, that is available to have the district supports closer to those schools whose zones they're in. And then they can all come together at some central place to, you know, have meetings or whatever they need. But I think that we, due to our, our geographical size and the fact that our central office folks are very connected in our schools now, that it would make much more sense when there is capacity available at his own school to have our, some of our folks be housed there. Again, it makes it a lot easier to shift than, than upending parents and rezoning and kids and that kind of thing. So I'll just, I'll just stop there. I, in summary, I've loved the idea of Reddick, but let's get ESE input and transportation input. I'd love the idea of keeping Oakcrest in mind, but letting that Principal Dobbs do her thing. And I would love to see the concept, you know, the mind thought of, of a central office go away, because that doesn't fit what I'm seeing currently in the field.
Okay, Dr. Campbell.
So I, I echo the sentiments about Reddick. I think that having center-based ESE services at Reddick, in addition to a Fordham Early Learning concept at Reddick, both would be potential for filling those hallways or classrooms, so be it. So somehow, I think that works. I, I also agree with member thrower that I don't want to put something else on Oakcrest at this point, especially if those students have more significant needs and impact that school grade even more so, depending on the grade levels and so forth. So if we were exploring options for Oakcrest, I think it would be to do a magnet program of sorts at Oakcrest. I don't think that we're quite ready for that for an November tenth rollout, but I would be all in on determining a magnet program for Oakcrest.
It used to be an IB school and it was an A school back then.
Well, I mean, I'm saying, we, something is going to need to significantly adjust the potential for school grade capacity at Oakcrest. And so, so that's that thought. In reference to a centralized district office, I completely support all of our school-based district support being as school-based as possible. But we have lots of operational members of our staff that will never go to a school. Payroll, finance, HR. I, I mean, there, there's lots of central office that can come here eventually, or sooner rather than later, that will never go to a school. And so that's where I'm thinking, we need to have more people here as humanly possible as we can. The closer everybody is, the easier it makes all the efficiencies operate better. That's where I'm going.
For that group, I, I don't disagree.
No, that's, that's, and, and I mean, and if our, if our mental health and wellness folks aren't school-based necessarily, I don't know what all those folks are doing over at Reddick, or if they just have an office space, then we need to have four people share one office if they're really not ever there that often. I, I don't, I haven't been there on the backside of, did I say Reddick? I meant at Fordham, thank you, I said Reddick and I meant Fordham, I, I know all the things I'm thinking. Y'all just got to follow along with my brain. But, yes, but I, I haven't been to their physical office spaces to know specifically what they're doing in those office spaces. But if they are predominantly sitting vacant, then you don't need an office space necessarily, other than just something that can be a shared workspace. So, yes, that was my thought on, we still have to have central office, but specifically for those folks that are not ever going to be school-based, to get as central as we can get. So I don't know that that still fully solves our Reddick capacity issues. I think it would begin to give us maybe fifty-five to sixty percent capacity possibly, so that just still doesn't fully answer the question. And the Anthony SPAR, I mean, I just. Rezoning, we have to do a year out, so we have to figure out what it is specifically we want to rezone. And, and, and what if we are willing to offline a campus on that north side?
Yes.
And if we are, then we need to say now that the intention is, we want to offline blah. If it's offline Anthony, so be it. Then we're rezoning all of the north end, we, we only have space for those Anthony kids right now to go to Reddick.
Well, unless there's a, a quarter shift essentially, like a rotation.
There's a what shift?
Like a rotation.
Yes.
Because like, why, I don't, I can't, I won't, I can't get behind Anthony driving to Reddick, like that just seems wild to me when SPAR is closer or Fesden is closer.
I agree, but there's also zero capacity at both schools.
What, that's what I mean is, like, similar to what you've said, is like an all elementary rezone, it has to be a reset. It's not just a you-go here, it has to be, and I think this is what Mr. Ayers often says when we have these conversations, it's not pure, it's not just A goes to B. It's the entire alphabet gets shifted and redistributed to maximize utilization.
Because then also a part of just below the SPAR zone would be the Ocala Springs zone, which is also bursting at the seams. So I, I think it is an entire north end re-zoning. And potentially some of it also has to do with, I think we did just course correct the former Evergreen zone that forced the students in that area to go to one of the high. I think we just course corrected that to the best of our ability at this juncture, but we, we couldn't get them to Oakcrest still yet, well, anyway.
They had to be at, they had to be.
Had to be at a high-performing school.
Those kids have all aged out, I think.
Yeah, I thi, I think we were in that last round of that, so. Okay, so does that get us anywhere? No, so are we saying that we want to offline Anthony Elementary School? And I don't know if we're willing to have that conversation today and really settle on it, but I, I mean, that's part of what this conversation is about. And that was one of the recommendations that came before us, so I think that it is appropriate to have the conversation. But one of the recommendations was to combine the schools.
Can we roll it back there real quick, Dr. Campbell, to your Reddick capacity conversation?
Yes.
So if we take out Building Ten, that takes our capacity, what are?
Here I have it.
Yeah, yes, thank you.
Six eighty-six total number, if we remove a hundred and thirteen seats, that's five seventy-three, we currently have three hundred and twenty enrolled, so our capacity would be fifty-six percent.
Correct, so if we add a hundred students, I, I heard two hundred all in was what Ms. Williams Jones said across the district, so.
For behavior and cognitive.
If we presume that fifty percent of those live on the north fifty percent of the district, if we're just guessing, then that would be about a hundred seats. So if we took a hundred then of those seats and gave them to a, a center. So if we took 100 then of those seats and gave them to a, a center school on the north end, what are, are we then at closer to 75% capacity?
We had 573.
But 423 out of 573, it's just a math problem, let's figure it out.
And then if we added some pre-K three seats. We added, we have the best VPK program pretty much in the state there. So if we added another VPK program and added some pre-K three to the school, we're then also filling some seats that way.
I'm just doing the math. Why is that?
And ESE transportation really factors into this too.
Right, I agree, that's what I'm worried about too.
You know, again, I, I, I'm glad we're having the conversation, but in terms of making decisions.
Well, I agree, we have to come back to like a, we need to give some guiding stones to come back for November 6.
Yes. If we're really going to focus this on Reddick, then also with their school grade and so on, how might that impact because kids that are.
I think a center school would have a separate, it's, it's cohabitation. So I mean, and I could be wrong from a programmatic perspective, but I would think a center school has a different, um, a school code than Reddick.
Yep.
Right? So they would not impact Reddick's school grade.
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I thought.
You just confirmed that. I know that would be true with a, like an outside school, but it's still one of ours.
It would depend on how you approach it. So the potential, you could take Marion Success Academy, which already has its own school code and is already designated as an ESE site school. And you could move that out there and operate two MSID numbers on the same campus. But I think part of the challenge there would be if the state considers them co-location, the center school would earn the, the base school's school grade, which in Reddick's case is not a problem right now. But that would be the only way. Otherwise, you would use the same MSID and then all of those students that are taking alternative assessments would then factor into the school grade.
That's was.
Yes. But if we did it two co-locations, then the one is going to, then the center school would take Reddick's school grade.
Correct.
Not the other way around.
Right.
Which I think was the concern you had.
Correct.
Yes.
I like option one. I'm sure the principal would do.
Yes. So I, I mean, I would like to understand more maybe for November 6 from Ms. Williams Jones and from Mr. Ostanik about, I mean, right now essentially we're taking those kids and they're probably on some level of specialized transportation and they're being bused to 18 different schools. So is it easier to pick them all up and take them to one place? Or is it easier to take them to 18 different places on specialized transportation? I don't know.
I believe it's one place, but is, is that, should that place be Reddick up there in the north end? Should it be Fort McCoy, you know? I, I have no idea.
Come on down, Mr. Ostanik. You are the next concession on The Price is Right.
When we talk about busing students, it's easier to keep them in their geographical location because I, we can double up routes easier that way. If I'm taking, if we're taking students from all over the county to one centralized location, it's harder to tier those routes. So if, if we have, if, if I have shorter distances, quicker turnover, it, it, it makes it a lot easier. If you're moving from, I mean, basically Umatilla and you're taking a student all the way to Reddick, well, that's, that's, that route's done for the day.
If, if the north end kids that have pretty extreme special needs didn't have to be brought all the way into town or south of town to get to their program, you know, the young children, would, would that be a help to have a location at, at Reddick or, or?
If we keep them in their geographical location, it's helpful for us, transportation-wise. So what I'm, so if, if it, say a kid lives in Citra and I only have to take them to Spar or Reddick, that's a lot better than bringing them all the way to town. And it, it allows us to tier that route easier for, for another tier or another run.
And then building on your idea, Board Member James, would it then be a good idea to be trying to identify a school south of town for our, you know, elementary age kids with significant disabilities so that, you know, we would have like a north end location and a south location? We'd still have Maplewood. And then Hillcrest would continue to be what it is.
Yes, ma'am, and I'll kind of use an example here. We have students that attend Hillcrest from all over the county and it's a long ride for a Hillcrest student to get on the bus.
They always have the most challenging.
And run a route all the way to Dunellen. And, and it, it, it creates challenges for us. It creates challenges for our drivers and aides, serious challenges because they're on, they're on a bus and they don't have the same, they're, they're on an island, basically. They don't have the same support system you have at a school. There's no resource officer, there's no behavior specialist, there's no behavior tech. They don't have, there's none of that there. So the faster we get those students home and, and get them off the bus, we, we're, we're creating a lot less issues that way. The longer they're on the bus, the more issues that are created.
Even within all the innovative accommodations that I know are being made and it is just Murphy's Law that the kid that has the most difficulty riding the bus is always in the furthest, furthest place.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It's something to at least consider, right? Maybe the team can work on it and bring it back for, for a topic of conversation. Ultimately, the goal here is to like fill Reddick as best we can. So we're just trying to kind of come up with some solutions that are alternative to option one that was presented today to put butts in seats at Reddick.
Fill Reddick and meet a need for, for kids.
Absolutely. I mean, I feel confident the north end principals alone, like if you were to just look at all of the principals in, you know, District Five and some of Nancy's district, like if you were to really talk to those principals, they, they could pick out a few friends that would probably benefit. And so, yeah, I don't want to drive from Akalawaha to Reddick, that doesn't make sense. But if we're talking 35th Street North, you know, and maybe we do a north, south, east, west situation. We put, because it's true, we do have room at, at East Marion and at Fort McCoy. So theoretically, we could do something super far east, we could do something super far west, something north and something south as well.
Here it comes again.
If I may interject, that one thing just came to mind. We al, already work with our ESE department on where to, how to route students, right? If a student's going to an ESE hub at a school and there's multiple, you know, usually there's two schools that have that. We try to, so, okay, where, one is there's capacity at that school for the student and two is how can transportation, what's the shortest route, right? What's, what's going to be the easiest way for transportation to get that student to the school? So some of that's already being done in the current system. So I think there's, there's a path there to talk through and see, you know, how to make it work.
And in theory, we could then alleviate potentially some of the self-contained, but really should be even more restrictive environments off of some of our centers where we're already specializing. Like I think about Mo's, Mo's has 10 units right now, specialized units. Potentially some of those units at Mo's, those students would even maybe benefit from a more restrictive environment, but we just don't have it right now. So could we theoretically even make more space at a school like Mo's, which really needs space for gen ed as well and, and move things around? Because we're already transporting those kids to Mo's, we already are doing it. So just making it more centralized.
Okay. Right. Anything else on north side that you want to cover, Dr. James?
Um, I mean, sure. Are we building a new school?
Not today.
Not today.
I mean, I still don't know that it, it filled, so part of, part of the goal today in my mind's eye was still to talk about consolidation in a greater way.
Yes.
That does start reducing operational costs. I mean, good, bad, or indifferent, it's the land we're in. And essentially what we're doing is we're just shifting things around, but we haven't offline anything.
I agree. And I think that the thing that no one has talked about yet is like, does Reddick close? Yeah, you're not, I mean, you're not wrong.
Actually, I think we've made a lot more progress and we're giving ourselves credit for.
Progress, just not operational costs.
Well, if, if the Fidler situation happens, then eventually we can get a number of how much that's saving the district. So that's a good start. And it also fills a need, you know, for serving kids. Again, I would really like to continue to pursue looking more at, instead of just looking right to schools to, to save money, let's look at buildings that are sitting, you know, vacant. We've got the, the school board building to talk about. You know, that could bring us some good income, you know? The warehouse, it took a while, but we've got a nice little infusion there.
And, and, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We've got that whole block, well, the data center's going to be moving into their spot. When is that supposed to happen?
At Christmas of next year.
Christmas of next year.
Right.
Okay, so we have a little time.
Yes.
We can't talk about the downtown.
Yeah, we can't talk about Central Elementary School until.
Well, we can talk about it and say that it's a priority because we're, we're talking about, you know, reducing costs and getting rid of obsolete, not getting rid of, because that's such a traditional historic school and, and we're going to have feedback on that as well. I guarantee you about what to happen, should happen with that property. But then we have that whole downtown block too that is, that is old and it could be more secure. And if we're talking about bringing people that will be better suited not to be out in other places downtown, then that's a whole nother possibility that, that.
Bring them all here.
Well, and if that's what we're going to do, then I, I don't disagree that we should be talking about that. I guess that my point is why, why don't we go ahead and talk about ways that are much less disruptive? Because we've already got Fordham and, and Madison Street that we're going to get feedback on and hopefully that'll go through, which is great. You know, we're talking about making some fundamental changes to how we're serving our youngest, most significantly needy kids with special needs. That's great. And now.
I mean, I do think if we put, if we were to put a centralized center school at Reddick for the north end and we were to offline Building 10, we're going to put ourselves at about 75% capacity at Reddick. Is, is that an accurate statement?
78.
So.
Or, excuse me, 73.
But I, I feel like that is very in line with, of, of all the schools I kind of wrote down and then I circled who was 3 and 400. And then, I mean, when you look at it, that is then in line with Romeo and Dunellen and Bobby Santos and, and Stanton and East Marion. And so it's much more in line with where we are. Now, is that where I want to be? No, because I think 600 plus is the happy space number financially. But also understanding to Board Member Thrower's point there, there's going to be ebbs and flows and concessions we have to make based on population and the type of student we're serving, et cetera. So I do think if, if we move forward with the center school model and offlining Building 10 for Fidlers, I do think we've, that is a significant step in the right direction for capacity, addressing capacity at Reddick.
Plus, what are we going to do with that old Fidler's property? Would that, would then that be something to land bank or sell or?
I'd say so, but I think, uh, chair.
So I agree with the progress that we've made. When I pulled this presentation up last week, surrounded by some other school board members who happened to glance over from other districts, their first thought was, wow, your fish capacity is really low. Because other districts who happen to be high performing have ensured that they are breaking even in all their locations. So we are making headway today, yes. I don't think this conversation is far from over. Because having any school with a capacity of 400 or in that range, it, it's just not going to make fiscal sense in the day and age that we're living in. So I know that that's not what people want to hear. But in a district where we have fish capacities over 1,000 for some elementary schools and then other fish capacities at 414, that just, it's not making fiscal sense. I understand that there's history and that the school was originally a high school and I understand all of the things and I appreciate all of that. But we're living in 2025 and beyond and we have to ensure that we're thinking as fiscally as we can with keeping student focused as well.
So originally when I presented the concept for something new on the north end, the idea was about 30 million at Spar. And 30 million at Spar would give capacity to absorb Anthony. It would also address the cafeteria, cafeteria. I think if we're doing it, we need to address the media center as well. I don't know if you've been in the media center at Spar, but sweet baby Jesus, there's a lot of room for improvement there. It is very old, very small. It feels, going into like Whining Oaks Elementary Media Center and then going into Spar is just feels like a completely different country.
That's because it is.
It is. So I can totally get on board with the 30 million, which is what we had talked about at Spar. And essentially then we're doing what Dr. Campbell's looking for, which is putting more butts in seats in one place. That's offlining Anthony, that's putting about 750 students at one location at Spar. That's putting some money towards the north end for new facilities, which has not really been done. And then I think we still look at addressing some grant funding to add a wing to Fesden to, to do some rezoning at Fesden as well. And like moving, because as Ocala Preserve and OPE continue to expand and grow, those kids are all zoned as it is right now for Fesden. And so I think that, that conversation's going to have to happen. But what I would ask is for the board to, at least when we come back on November 6, give consideration to still looking at the 30 million for Spar and, and saying, because that essentially, Mr. Rios maybe can work on the numbers and I can show him what Ms. Boston Ellis had given me. But in a 10 or 15-year outlook, I think it was 10-year, it literally pays for itself, quote unquote, because of the cost to operate Anthony and the cost of the operational staff. And, and in a decade, improving Spar and putting everyone in a better school literally pays for itself because we're going to spend the money either way. We're going to spend the money operationally to the tune of 2 and a half million annually over 10 years, which is $25 million just in operations. I mean, just alone in the operations cost, we would, that would be enough to pay for the, the addition essentially at Spar. Just in the operation cost alone to run Anthony. And then you have the delayed maintenance at Anthony. And in addition to that, what we added in was the, the cost to run, right? The, the electric bill and all of those other things that go into it. So I would just ask if that can stay on the table for the conversation when we come back in, on November 6? Because I think it is a piece to the puzzle that Dr. Campbell is rightfully addressing, which is we, we still have the bigger pieces to the puzzle to address.
Agreed.
Yeah. Go ahead.
I, I don't mind it staying on the, the table. I think we do need to talk about it, but I guess I just feel like we need to also focus on getting our own, you know, district facilities in, in order almost first. You know, if we're, if we're looking for ways to save money and reduce maintenance costs and things like that, I guess the other thing to keep, that we need to keep in mind is that, and every district has its own unique, you know, culture, tradition, issues. You know, us being the geographic size of Rhode Island creates its own issues and has resulted in creating its own traditions. And, you know, as an elected official, we're, we're here to serve the people that, that voted for us. And, and so that's what makes me really struggle with Anthony. I don't have a, or what, to, to share right at this moment. But what I do know is that there is a strong sense of community up there. And I don't hear them clamoring like saying, tear down Anthony and build us a new school because that's more important to us, you know? I, I think what they would probably say is if you have spaces that kids aren't even in, that don't really have the tradition and history and culture, take care of those first and then come talk to us. Because we'd still be saving money either way.
Not as much.
Maybe not as much, but it, but at least we're showing good faith and honoring, you know? If it has to happen, then at some point it has to happen. But I'm sure that they would rather see it happen a lot further into the future than, than now. Especially since we have our own house cleaning to do. You know, I love what you brought forward about Fidlers. I've literally forgotten about that building. And we really, I, I think there's way more upside than downside, you know? And hopefully we can, again, that whole city block that doesn't directly support kids, that's in a very lucrative place. Now, maybe A Street and Osceola would have some ideas for, for expansion or something? I don't know. But if we're talking about centralizing central office, let, let's get them there and do something with that downtown location before we take on the moving kids around and disrupting families. But that's just, but I see, I do grudgingly agree that there's a need. I do. But I'd just like to see the order be a little different.
And, and I, I'll add, from a, from an, from an academic achievement perspective, we, like it or not, the metric in which we are evaluated is school grade. And school grade is one big math problem. And the bigger your denominator, the easier it is. And the bigger your denominator, the easier it is to work the math problem. And schools that are small have limitations with the manipulation to the math. They just do. And, you know, five fifth graders, when there's only forty-five fifth graders, is way more impactful if those five are really struggling than if there's a hundred fifth graders. And so, and that's just an example. But we, a small school has its perks, but a school that is a moderate size also has perks because it allows flexibility. If you're a parent and you only have two options for a grade level and your child, and there's only one inclusion teacher, so you really only have one option if your child has any level of unique abilities, that isn't always the best option for a parent. And so we just, it is a delicate, it is delicate. And I agree with board member thrower. I think it's an and both. Yes, we need to be addressing all of the stuff downtown. If there's room to bring them here, let's bring them here. I don't know that Mr. Duncan's going to say the toilets are going to keep flushing here if we keep moving adults here, but I guess that can be another work session in and of itself because at some point I think the plumbing here is going to cease to exist and we're going to have to financially address that as well. But I, I do, I, I am totally on board with anything we are not utilizing to the capacity we should, that is not serving students, we need to be timely addressing. Because we need to show parents that we're all willing, all parties involved in MCPS are willing to address this issue and have a level of uncomfortability. A moving, adults' cheese being moved is probably more uncomfortable than children's cheese being moved. Adults love where they are and so there are adults that if they get their office moved, they don't love that either. And so there needs to be a shared level of uncomfortability. We shouldn't just put that on children. That needs to be something that we're all taking on to board member thrower's point, like those offices, HR and payroll and all of those, if they can come here, absolutely. I would love to see us have a discussion about all of that space downtown. I would love to see it sold. I would love to talk with the city about their comprehensive plan for downtown and they have lots of grants that they can partner with people who are purchasing land downtown to essentially incentivize, um, the people, they want to come, you know, be downtown to come. And so I would love to have those conversations, but we got to find a place for them here or somewhere else.
Right. And I would rather see the density downtown than bleeding out into the Farm Line Preservation area.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would agree.
Yep. So I, I mean, I, I agree with all of that. I, I think that that is a separate work session for us to talk about how many people that actually is to move to this campus. But if we do move forward with moving all of the Bridgeway Academy students off this campus in the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, then I want as many people filling those offices that will become offices. And yes, I understand the plumbing capacity here. Mr. Duncan stayed with us all day today. Appreciate the, the plumbing challenges here, but right now we have more than three hundred students here. So I don't know that we're going to have three hundred employees, maybe so. I don't know what those numbers are that we actually have that are in that space, uh, right by Osceola right now. But I, that's what I'm all for, that we figure out how to, and then if it comes to, okay, what is it actually going to take? We know it's expensive to do the plumbing upgrades here. We know that. Uh, I mean, we know it's going to be outlandish and it's not going to be able to be something that we put in the sales tax because it, sales tax was all about student safety and all about student capacity. We did, I, I pulled up from our website what we had as our potential priority list for potential half cent sales tax revenue because I wanted to see where some of those dollars, obviously the first one was Bellevue Elementary, second one has to do with Donellen. Uh, but we did have in this fifteen million for Marion Technical Institute capital improvements for student safety is how it was worded. That's not what it is if it becomes district offices. So then that means we have to start using, I, I don't know what we use to, the money we use to, um, fix the plumbing here on this campus if this becomes district. But nevertheless, I, I am all for that, that centralized space here and just continued conversations, um, looking forward to November sixth.
Okay. Thank you. I, my one ask as we look at, as we, we talk about, um, central office staff, it is, I'm kind of in line with Ms. Thrower when, we know when you, when you come from the school setting and, and you pull up and there's several hundred cars sitting here at, um, at MTI, it is, it is, it is a little salt in the wound. So I just, I would like for, um, there to be thoughtful planning on who is going to be at the central office campus. And then really almost think about hubs for our staffs and out in different areas in the community where we have room for them to be on school campuses, you know, almost like setting up teams of staff members in different areas around the community. Um, because I think that's import, important. The support, um, needs to be available to the students and the staff. And if they're sitting here in an office all day, that's not happening. And I know that, just like Dr. Campbell shared, that, that is, some people, that, that's your position, you're in your office all day, but it's definitely not everyone's position. And so where, if they're supposed to be working with students and be on campuses, that's where I'd like to see them.
Okay.
All right, I'm going to ask for public comment just because we did have a lot more conversation after our first public comment. So is there any, any other public comment? Okay.
Would we possibly be able to ask Dr. Brewer to recap our next steps just to make sure we're all, at least moderately in the same book?
Maybe, um, could you send that out in an email? Because I do, you have pages of notes. Do you want to send that to us in an email?
Um, yes, but I can, I can, let me summarize what I.
What you got?
Like the big picture stuff.
Okay, big picture. Um, and then you can correct me at this point, but, um, big picture, the board came to consensus to have the conversation, um, further conversation about Madison, moving Madison Street in its entirety to Fordham's campus, um, with the, also the bigger picture conversation with getting permission from the Fordham family of kind of, um, reimagining early learning across the district, using that as a program model.
In their blessing.
Blessing. Um, taking the Fiddler's office space location and don't know what we decided about the property, but moving that office space to Reddick Collier Building Ten, changing those one hundred and thirteen seats out, removing those from the fish report, so it would change to five hundred and seventy-three at Reddick. Town hall meeting at Fordham on October twenty-seventh at five forty-five. Also, do you want me to talk about the K eight conversations or I can email those out?
Just with a survey, a survey ahead of the town hall.
Yes, ma'am.
When would we want to send out a survey by?
Tonight.
Uh, well.
We have quite a busy afternoon.
Oh, I can't hear you. I'm just kidding.
Could we say by Monday?
Because Monday's only a week ahead of the town hall.
Tomorrow's a teacher work day, so district staff works tomorrow?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Christian.
It's coming.
As Dr. Campbell knows, the most difficult part of a survey is coming up with the questions. So once the questions are determined, the survey is pretty quick because we already know the intended audience, but it's just the questions that.
I think what I would, I think if the board could commit to, um, delivering by like noon tomorrow, any questions we feel like would be representative of what we are going to, we get, we get a lot of emails with a lot of questions and we have, there's trends in those questions we get. And I'm sure operations gets them too. But I feel confident that I certainly by noon tomorrow could send an email to, to operations to say, these are certainly questions that I would love to be able to get an answer about in some capacity. Word it yourself, certainly, but things, topics that I want to make sure are addressed.
Keep in mind, those are questions coming to you.
Right.
These are questions coming from the district to the parents.
No, I understand. So, so what I'm saying is I think from the, as a board member, I'd like to, I can, I feel confident saying, these are questions I think could be in a survey and these are questions I want to make sure that we're prepared to answer when the, when people have questions from an operations perspective.
So see, I'm sorry if you're going to say something, Kevin. I, I think those are two totally different things. So I think a lot of what we're wanting to find out, we'll find out in the town hall if we have the town hall set up so that we're coming with answers before they ask questions. If we are surveying them, are we simply just asking, if the district moves forward with this plan, will you continue your child in this choice program? Is that what our survey is? Because essentially that's, because that's kind of what I was asking when I was rolling out to these folks. I was saying, if we were to move Fordham Early Learning to Oak Crest, would your child still continue there? And I asked that to every person that emailed me because I was just like, so, so I think that's all we really want to know in a survey, is if Madison Street Academy, as it currently stands, moves to the Fordham campus, would you still have your child a part of that choice program?
Yes, I would agree. I think the, the question needs to be framed that, to say philosophically, the programmatic perspective of Madison, its integrity remains. So.
I mean, I think that's the only question we're having on the survey. Is there additional, because again, I, I think we elaborated a lot on what all will need to be covered in the town hall, but to Mr. Christian's point, like what is it actually we want to know? I think the answer is, will your child still stay in a choice program if we choose to make it look this way?
It's located on.
If it's located.
If the address moves from one address to the other address.
I mean, I think that's about the only survey question that we would have unless you guys can come up with anything else.
Beck's was only two questions.
I would agree with that and maybe just an open ended question for them to write questions so then we can have those questions to then try to frame and answer ahead of the town hall.
Okay. Yeah, that works. I think that's it.
Question and then opportunity for feedback.
Okay, thank you.
That might have been your easiest ask that you've got to respond.
Kevin, you might even want to include in the survey a link to the, today's workshop. If you want to see more information, I mean, and I know that that's a lot for them to watch, but like if, if you want to really know why or where this has come from, here's the link.
And, and you can go to our, you know, whatever.
Our whatever.
It's whatever. We, we talked about this for.
He's the expert, so we'll let him do this, but maybe it's something that even in the town hall flyer that we create, that there's a QR code on that flyer that the parents could give, answer the survey on.
Yes, that's a great idea.
That's good.
Are we married to the term town hall?
No.
No.
Okay, thank you. Because we already have town hall gatherings.
Yes.
Branded and we have the second tonight and we still have two more of those, so just for non-confusion purposes, we may call it something else.
That's just what came to mind because I was like, we don't need to have a workshop to listen to public comment.
Call Ms. Beck fast because she probably has already communicated that out.
What are we going to call it?
What would the Fox say?
Public discussion? The, the.
We could call it the school community forum.
What does it, what would the Fox? School community forum. Okay, that works. School community forum.
It's specific to the one school.
It is. It is. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Christian.
Ms. Conrad, I have a couple of things. So for November sixth, these are some, these are the items that we are presenting to the board. Um, the feedback from Madison and that would be a quick turnaround. Actually, we're going to present that, we'll be able to share that during the board meeting.
The next.
During comments, but then we'll reserve the November sixth, um, because we may still have to have that conversation. Also, I'm kind of unclear on what you want in terms of numbers for the Anthony Spar in it, other than what we've already provided. So can you just elaborate on what the board is asking for numbers for that?
I don't know that I needed specific numbers as much as, well, I mean, I can get with Mr. Welsh specifically to just recap what Ms. Boston Ellis and I had discussed. Because that's really, what I'm referencing in my frame is this, the work Ms. Boston Ellis and I did about a year ago about basically a ten-year pro forma, I guess is the best way to put it, between the two schools and how the math there. I'm just asking it for it to stay on the table until November sixth for the board to at least have continued conversation. That's all I'm asking for.
And really with, with the updated slides, you can really almost figure that out yourself. I mean, each board member, not you specifically, Sarah, but, um, when you look at the school deficit and you look at the maintenance, you, you'll see what the challenges are. And just in one single year. I know the public can't see that item right now, but millions of dollars each year are our small schools.
Well, if you consider the two and a half million to operate the auxiliary staff plus the deficit of a million plus a year, we're talking three and a half million annually over ten years is thirty million dollars.
Right.
And we do have an updated slide from Mr. Rios Welsh, um, because the one that we had received yesterday, updated, had a typo on the Anthony deficit. So.
Okay, so you're also asking for all the district or the central office staff, basically where they all are located, because remember we have federal programs, we have mental health, we have over a hundred employees in that location, that they are already grouped into multiple people into rooms. Um, so you, we, we want kind of a big picture of where all the central office staff, people are located to bring you back.
And, and if you could break it out by location, like the downtown ones and, and knowing that technical, or technology is going to be moving to their data center, you know, those kinds of.
Because we know immediately with this Madison plan, we're, the mental health staff will have to come here. So that's something we already, um, are aware of.
That's what you were planning on anyways.
Right.
Even if, even if Fordham had gone to Reddick, that was your plan? Because Bridgeway was going to.
Going to Fordham.
Correct. So we'll bring you those numbers, um, and that's, those are my notes.
I would just love to know how many adults can fit here.
Oh, right, right, yeah.
Like what is the all-in plumbing issues aside, the all-in of how many adults can be here?
And then the maintenance cost for the plumbing repair, which I think Mr. Duncan has shared, twenty million? Twenty million? For this central, for this campus to have the plumbing repaired.
How much is a plumbing portable?
That's what I was just going to say, how much for just a nice concert.
Plumbing portables.
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
I like, I seriously, when we get into that conversation, I'm going to want to have a lot of out of the box talking about that because we don't have the money for a new district office right now. And like if plumbing portables is what it takes for right now, I mean, I want to, I want to be able to have a very out of the box conversation about that.
The, uh, the portables that we put in at Bellevue High School, Donellen High School and Donella Middle, they were right at three hundred thousand for a plumbing portable.
And they just tap into a septic or they would tap into city?
We would find a location that we could tie into the septic.
But here we would have to, we could have a septic tank or we'd have to go to city sewer.
No, we're, we're on city sewer.
Okay.
We would tie into the city sewer.
One portable has how many seats available?
Excuse me?
What's the fish for one plumbing portable?
Um, it depends on which layout we go with, their, their group restrooms, so it would probably, I, I really, I couldn't tell you right off for adults how many that it is capable, but quite a few.
Okay. Certainly we could purchase.
Absolutely.
Four or five of those.
If need be.
To put in the big field over here or whatever. To address if, if we got to a critical component of plumbing being an issue on this campus, there are some ways we could more responsibly address the needs in the short term.
Yes.
Is that ideal for the adults? No. However.
Now unfortunately, they take approximately eight months.
Sounds like we should order them.
Before they're available, but.
You got to hold it along.
You might want to order.
Yes, they are a long lead on them.
I think.
By November sixth, we have to have a decision made so they will be here in time for July one.
Yes, ma'am.
Which I think is the intention here is if we're really going to bring all those people over here, we need to have that discussion because you're right, we should probably preemptively plan to purchase a few of those.
Yes.
Because the plumbing situation here is dire.
Getting worse, yes, yes.
Okay.
Good point. I mean, good point.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan.
Yes, ma'am.
I am impressed I remembered twenty million though. Probably because it's shocking.
Because everything they touch has to be upgraded as they undo it.
So can, can I ask another question about this campus? So since we are talking Bridgeway leaving this campus, there are other students on this campus right now, Marion Technical College Culinary and so forth, and those programs will still remain here? Yes?
Yes, we're not quite ready to, um, we've moved everyone off that can be moved off. Yes, we're not quite ready to, we've moved everyone off that can be moved off.
What, what is it going to take, though? So if I recall, and we're really rabbit-holing now, but the, the kitchen at MTC, because we stopped using it a while back. Do we know what the issue is with the MTC kitchen and why Chef 9 can't be over there?
From what I understand, a, a lot of repairs in that space.
What does that mean, though? Because we're talking 20 million for plumbing. What is a lot? I mean, a lot, a couple hundred thousand?
Can we roll it into our appropriation request?
We probably need Mr. Smallridge to provide input, because he has, there's been a big reason.
500,000 for it or something, like, whatever.
I mean, that's what I'm saying, like, what is a lot? Because we're talking millions and millions and millions right now, so is a lot a couple hundred thousand, or is a lot millions and millions and millions? But if that's the barrier for Chef 9 to get off this campus too, then I just think we need to.
I think that's a great idea, Dr. Campbell.
What else is here besides Chef 9 and the culinary program after this year?
The work study.
Auto and welding?
Welding.
Auto and welding.
Oh, I forgot welding.
Welding is so good.
Okay.
I mean, appropriation requests are due what, when? Next, it's next month.
Yeah, and it's being, we're about to be able to move all of the welding students that were there, it's part of it. But the auto is still back there. We've already moved barbering.
Yeah.
And technology moved last year.
Okay.
We're getting there.
We are. We are.
And that also means that where barbering was, we also can have office spaces now. Yes?
He's used, that space is where our work study students are taking part in.
So where would work study go? Would they just go over to Bridgeway?
For right now, but our big, our big goal for work study is to move those back, all those students back to their own base schools, so they can partake in community assignments, jobs, and their own communities.
Okay.
But we were waiting, we didn't have any space right now until we rezone, until all the students, yeah, are rezoned.
Yeah, so when the new high school opens, then we should have some high school seats to be able to move work study to their base schools, which would also be next year, freeing up even more space for offices.
That's, yeah. I mean, the 100 people at mental health, the 100 adults at Fordham is pretty hefty. I mean, that's a lot of adults that are there, not in Fordham, but obviously on the site.
Well, and that's really why, why I made my comment, because when I think about mental health and wellness, I really think they should be at schools.
Yes.
So why do we have 100 people?
They are, they are assigned to schools, but they, they have office spaces too. They do all of the evaluations and things like that. So I don't have the exact numbers, but we will have it for November 6th.
Think of it like a workplace collective?
That's exactly what it is. That's exactly what it is, because a lot of times when I call a social worker, you know, they're out in the field, and then they may or may not even come back to their office that day. I think they have one day a week that they're at the office, and, and that's when they have their staff meeting, and they're writing evaluations and doing, you know, that type of stuff.
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Welsh. That paints a much better picture.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's very different than what you were imagining.
Yes, thank you, yes.
I'd still would love to reimagine the use of the space, because if they're only sitting in their desk for eight hours of a 40-hour work week, do we really need to have a desk in a place? I don't know if that's contractually, or an expectation, or what that looks like, but if there's a way we could reimagine the workspace to be most efficient, especially for individuals who are not at their, you know, they're only in the office one day a week, and they're in the field the other four.
There does need to be some privacy, too, because of the conversations that they have that are confidential and things like that. So, yeah, so, but.
Future room for conversation.
Yep.
The only other thing I didn't say out loud was the ESC numbers for the North and the South, what that would look like. And so we'll have that prepared as well.
Okay. Maybe not, I also would like kind of a heat map on that, is that, is that possible? So we have just, not just an.
It's possible.
It's nice to be, because I'm visual, it's nice to be able to say, you know, if you've got 316, we can see where they are, you know, in relation to Reddick or.
And isn't it more based on, the ESC number we would be looking for would be students that are on special transportation, also students that with extreme special needs, you know, because there's plenty of kids with a, with a special needs label that are doing fine in inclusion and shouldn't leave their campus.
Absolutely. Yeah, these would be the ones that would need, that would be, if we had this location, would be served in that most restrictive setting.
Okay.
All right, we're all good?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank goodness. Board, we're going to move on to item 7.4, 7.1, workforce housing discussion, and I'm going to turn that over to Attorney Powers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, we've had a productive couple weeks there. We had most recently been in contact with, doing a lot of coordination with both Upwards Counsel as well as with our bond counsel on some financial questions. Of close to 100 comments and questions that were generated initially by the legal department, after several meetings with all parties, none of those red lines or questions remain. There were two ever, however broad areas, and I believe I've reported this to the board before. After the last meeting with Upward, we indicated there were two items remaining, that Upward would submit a P-3 application, and that they would finalize the draft memorandum of law describing the basis of the taxation advantages that are central to the plan. I don't want to get into details about that, because I wouldn't do that for any party that we're contracting. It wouldn't make that largely public. But I did coordinate with Upwards Counsel. They've indicated their draft review will be supplemented soon. So they've given us a draft review. Mr. Blackman was designated to review that, and he has, still has a few questions, and we're looking for them to sort of finalize it. And so I reached out to Upwards Counsel this week, and we've communicated, and they promised that that will be finalized quite soon. A P-3 application was submitted. It's been forwarded to the Facilities Department. Now, Facilities indicates that there may be questions regarding how to proceed, whether there might be an advertised invitation for alternative bids necessary. Some example documents from Pope County were provided to me. As this is an internal process, I have to rely on Facilities to coordinate with purchasing to find out how they want to do that, as I'm unaware what existing operations procedures are now in place. I don't want to run afoul of whatever those procedures are. So Operations may need to designate someone for management of the P-3 application if Ms. Usher needs that assistance. And do we want to advertise it as a, as a invitation to bid for other parties? Those are questions that I would feel more comfortable making sure that purchasing's been consulted, that the, the people on staff here certainly help, I'm willing to give legal advice and legal opinion, but I want them to also be able to be part of that. I don't want to be telling them how to do things. I'd like for them to look into how they, how they already have addressed this problem, or addressed these sorts of issues in the, in the past. For all I know, there's a manual that has all of their procedures and says follow steps 1 through 7, and I don't want to mix them up. Dr. Brewer has requested, she and I have talked, and Dr. Brewer has requested Mr. Welsh be included, which is consistent with my earlier view, that it's a multi-department consideration. I've spoken briefly with Mr. Welsh. I have coordinated with our bond counsel about some of the things that Mr. Welsh and I had briefly spoken about, so George and I have been on the phone quite a bit more. And I've retained him to review and offer specific expertise on some specific questions. Luckily, Bond Counsel is already familiar, so I've included him in the review of our red lines and the general proposal for several months now. Even going back to the last FSBA conference, George and I were sitting down, taking a couple hours to go over things that I had questions for, just professional to professional. So there are some, there are some issues, three broad identifiable areas I won't get into, but Mr. Welsh and I will discuss that also. And in the meantime, the timeline at this point is whatever time it takes to review three things. The memorandum from Upland when they finalize, the P-3 review by Facilities, whatever advertising needs to be done, if we're going to, if we're going to advertise for invitation for bids, and process elements, whatever needs to happen there. Happy to work with Operations if, if they want me to just create and develop the process for where we need to go, but I want to make sure that, that purchasing is able to, to let them know what they, what their thoughts are on this first. And then Bond Counsel's report, which every time I've worked with, with George Smith, our bond counsel, he and I work quickly and well together, so I don't, I would anticipate that the, since we've narrowed down some, three specific areas for him to review, I wouldn't think that would take too long. So I would request that all parties work to achieve, and I have asked all parties to work to achieve sort of clear plan by the end of October if possible. Certainly, some things are going to need to go out a little bit past that, because there's going to be next steps. But I want everybody working to try to have some, have some wrap-up and strategy by end of, end of this month. And anyone that is working on this project, if they have a need for us all to get together or get together in subsets, I stand ready to use my office conference room or, or get together with anyone to try to make it happen.
Okay. Attorney Powers, I just have, I have one question. So it was mentioned that there was a visit at Westport High School, and then there was a mention that there was a survey, that, that went out by Upwards, or that was an informal conversation. Do you have any, do you have any information on what, what did survey mean?
I know of nothing. I heard the same thing that you did. When we were having a meeting, they mentioned having polled or surveyed people from a school. I'm not, I, it's not something that I directed them to do or authorized them to do or anything, so I, I don't have any knowledge, other than what may have, I mean, perhaps Dr. Brewer can, I don't know.
I can speak to that. So I worked with Jason and Kealan trying to schedule site visits for them to gauge interest from different school communities. The first visit was at Westport High School. It was a couple of weeks ago. They did a brief presentation, and they stayed throughout the day. They gave a flyer out. In that, in, on that flyer, there was a QR code that the staff members, if they choose to do so, they could select whether they were interested, if they owned a home. What I, what I shared publicly, so this is probably where it's coming from, I shared that we could do a survey to our own staff members to determine if there was a need, because that survey that they did did belong to them. So I did express that. I also have another meeting scheduled for them to come to Howard Middle School, and these schools are selected based on availability with faculty meetings and large staff. So that's why they were chosen. So they're coming on October 29th at 2:30 to, again, brief, to meet briefly for 15 minutes, just to provide the presentation and then to gauge interest.
Okay, because, you know, originally when we talked about a survey, I thought that would be something that was mutually shared between both parties, so we could receive feedback, you know, on, in, on if our staff was interested or not. And so I am definitely interested in, and I'm just one board member, but I would like to know, I guess we'll need to send out our own survey to see, you know, what their thoughts are.
I can tell you that during, during the meeting that I last had with Upward, Jason had some specific examples of, or description of what they had asked and how, what the general flavor of, of what employee opinions are. So, you know, I mean, obviously, in any case, we're trusting what, what someone who's trying to engage in contract with us is saying, but I think at least if, having him summarize what they found may also be useful to whatever efforts that we take besides that also. So if you'd like, we can also ask them to summarize whatever their findings were, because I, I do not privy them, I don't, I don't have them, other than what was briefly mentioned in the meeting.
I think every, any little bit of information you have is, would be appreciated.
But an internal survey would have value.
Yes.
Right, our own internal.
Yeah, our own internal survey.
Again, it would come down to the questions and how we ask them, and the information we provide to them in advance of asking the question. Because I can speak to, last week at, again, school board, there was a presentation from Orange County showing all the different various housing options they are providing for their employees currently. They are working with multiple developments that are coming in, that are setting aside 10 apartments here, 10 apart, because they have, they have 26,000 employees, but just the vast numbers of people that are interested in it. And anecdotally, hearing, at least there were a staff member or two at the Westport conversation that said, well, hey, if you can do that, I would sell my home and do that, because I wouldn't have to do my lawn, and, you know, all the different things that would be coming in to play with what Upward potentially is going to create. So I, I do think it would be valuable to know what our full employee base would like to do, but I think it also would be valuable to know exactly what's going to be built, because if they're going to do something that also is with the city and county, and this is kind of an intergovernmental thing, that's a 50, 500 unit for all three of us to start, or if they're wanting, so there, there's still some extenuating thoughts, I think, that haven't been nailed down just yet. But some of that, we're just waiting on information back from them, I think.
Well, in the first round of surveys, may, we may not get all the answers we want. I mean, my vision was that after they give a presentation, say at, at Howard Academy, then we get some feedback after that presentation, you know, after they've seen the information that's available at that time, you know, then when they're able to go to another school, and then once we get closer to the finish line, then, yes, absolutely, you know, you're going to send it out to the whole staff. But right now, we're just hitting pockets of, of people who are being able to see the presentation.
And it's, it is really challenging, just for me to schedule this one meeting at Howard Middle School during a faculty meeting for 15 minutes. It's, it's just a challenge. So something that we might want to consider is hosting, hosting them, they're willing to travel, and then just seeing which faculty members come. But I agree with Dr. Campbell, we need to put something out there first to even invite them. Right now, it's, it's hard to even give that invitation, so if you just say, we have a two-bedroom apartment or a home for you for $1,500, 99% of people would say, yes, I'm interested, just because that's less than you can rent anywhere else. So I think that's really going to be important to get real feedback. We need to know what the product is.
And we don't have that information yet, correct?
Not yet.
Right.
And it's, it's also really, really difficult to, to say, here's what, this is an opinion that I'm going to share. I, I'm, I love that they're going out and gauging small pockets of feedback, just to see if this is a project that they want to bring to Marion County. Completely respect that, because this is a lot of financial investment they're willing to put in to our community potentially. What I don't want to do is us to get really, aggressive is the wrong word, but we've been here a long time, I don't, I can't come up with another one, really get ambitious in sharing a lot of information right now for something that is not coming for two years. I, I don't want employees to be thinking, well, I'm not signing my six-month lease, because the school district's going to have this, and we, we're going to have land purchased, like, we don't have an agreement, we, there's no, so while I love the idea of surveys, I think the small-pocket meetings are going to be easier for them to determine if they want to bring their investment to Marion County. And now, if we enter into an agreement with them, and we're unable to fill the however many houses, then they just put them out on the market, and they just become a regular development, just like any other development out there, at fair market value. And they just do what they're going to do, and, anyway, I, I just, I, I don't want us to be sending out a district-run survey until we are really sure on the timeline of when we will have the units available, because that will impact people's decisions of saying yes or no.
I agree. I just think whenever the time is right, we need to do internal survey as well as them.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Anything Nancy on that? I agree that we don't want to jump the gun.
Right, we don't want to jump the gun, but I do, like, my feeling was is that they're collecting some information. I, I would like to at least have the same information that they have, and so.
We need to ask them to share it with us.
Right, I know, and I don't know, I mean, that's what Attorney Powers said. He would get, try to get a summary.
Yeah.
And so that, that solves that.
I ask them, they don't charge legal fees, so I'll ask them.
Right, right.
Mr. Powers, will you just elaborate what my role is on this RFP? Are you contacting Rick, or am I?
No, I, that would be something that I would, I would prefer that you.
Okay.
Coordinate with, and it may be that, it may be that Ms. Usher already has, I haven't communicated with her about this. So maybe, except that she had sent me requests, do we need to do an invitation to bid? And that's a question I'd rather not answer, because there may be purchasing operational rules that I don't know about. I want to make sure that those are followed, because I don't want to be, you know, I don't want to be designing the way that you should respond.
Okay.
So.
I'll follow up with Mr. Brewer.
It would strike me that most likely purchasing would know about those. So the people that I would call, if I were coordinating, would be, call Ms. Usher, call Rick, find out what do you need to do, and how do you, how do you want to proceed forward. That's all.
Okay. Thank you for the update.
All right. Anything else?
I do have one other request, if I may be recognized. Nothing else else to, to Upward. So if we want to have any public comment, we can.
Right, I was going to do that next. All right. With our vast audience, do we have any public comment? Okay, seeing none. Do you want me to go ahead and do my announcements, and then I'll go to you for public comment? That'll be great. Okay, moving on to meeting reminders. There's an ICROC meeting this afternoon in a couple of hours. So it's coming soon at 4 o'clock, right here at MTI. There will be a Town Hall gathering this evening at Osceola Middle School at 6:00 PM. There is a special school board meeting scheduled for October 28th at 7:00 AM. A school board meeting is scheduled on October 28th at 5:30 PM. And there's also an administrative briefing and work session scheduled for October 31st on Neola policies. And with that, Attorney Powers.
Yes, I have, board members, I am notifying you that Attorney Suzanne Green, or designee of the DJH Legal Law Firm, has informed me that advice is needed regarding case number 23 CA 2512, styled Chris A. styled Chris A. Handley versus the School Board of Marion County, Florida. Pursuant to two-eighty-six-point-oh-one-one Florida statutes known as the Government and the Sunshine Act, I'm requesting an attorney-client session with the board for the purpose of discussing the evaluation or compromise of that matter. I've asked the board's clerk to cause reasonable public notice of the time and date of this attorney-client session, um, and the names of the persons attending it to be published. It's suggested that the attorney-client session be held beginning at nine oh-two AM during a recess of the November sixth administrative briefing and work session scheduled, or as soon thereafter as may be heard. As required by this statute, only the following individuals will be present: Lori Conrad, Board Chair, Eric Cummings, Vice Chair, Dr. Allison Campbell, Board Member, Nancy Thrower, Board Member, Dr. Sarah James, Board Member, Dr. Danielle Brewer, Interim Superintendent, Daniel Blackman, Staff Attorney, Jeremy Powers, School Board Attorney, and Suzanne, Suzanne Green, Esquire, or designee of the DGH Legal Law Firm. I've also asked a court reporter to record the session as required by statute. Her notes will be fully transcribed and filed with the board clerk. Upon the conclusion of any litigation or settlement of all claims arising out of the matter, the transcript will be made public record. And, um, Madam Chair, I would need for you to, I, I gave you a little item there. We'll have something in the second page of that.
You, I couldn't hear Attorney Powers, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
I'm sorry, um, did I, did I hand, did I leave one of these on your desk on your map there?
Um, you didn't, not.
I did not, okay. Um, I will ask you to recommend that the board hold that attorney-client session to discuss that pending matter. Will you do so?
Yes. Can we have a, board, can we have an attorney-client session on November sixth, shortly after opening the administrative briefing and work session?
And then if there are no objections, the attorney-client session, session should occur during that recess at nine oh-two AM, or as soon thereafter as may be heard.
Okay. Everybody's in agreeance?
May I ask a quick question? November sixth is also currently scheduled for a seven AM. And if we continue that, could we move, depending on what happens at seven AM, could we actually have attorney-client at eight AM?
Uh, it, it really depends on scheduling of our, I mean, I can call and try to get our...
But if we could do that...
And if we can, I can shift, if I can get the, the, um, transcriptionist here, then, yeah, there's no reason why I couldn't start.
Let's have it in that window that we just had an hour and a half break. I mean, if we could.
Yes, I would love, I would love if we could do it at eight AM.
That would be efficient.
Yes.
Do we, is our November sixth still, our seven AM still going on the sixth as of now?
As of right now.
Yeah, we won't know until tomorrow's...
I, no, I think, didn't, um, she say this morning we had a one-person contest?
But I, I canceled that.
Oh.
Because it's past, it's past the...
All it requires is for me to get ahold of, um, both Suzanne and, uh, the reporter.
But we don't know about disputes.
If we don't have any, then we should just gavel in and gavel out.
Right.
There still could be disputes, even though that early re-entry won't take place, there still could be disputes for that or do.
So if we could schedule it for eight AM, it would still give us an hour to handle whatever might happen.
Right.
And regardless, if seven AM gets canceled, then we're just here at eight AM for the attorney-client?
Yep, and for the formality of scheduling, as I'm required to do by statute, I'm scheduling it for nine oh-two AM. However, given the fact that I, the only parties present, if they can start earlier, I will be making it happen, okay?
Very good. All right, thank you. Um, Ms. Martinez Young?
Yes, Madam Chair, um, FSBA Thirty-Ninth Day Annual Legislator is January twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth in Tallahassee. I will send out an email to see who would like to attend, so I can make reservations. Um, I would need a response back by November third. Um, they did tell me yesterday that the session starts at one o'clock, so you don't have to be there bright and bright and early on that Wednesday.
So we won't need a hotel that first night, for sure, okay?
Just respond to your email if you plan to attend.
Okay, and you said by November third?
November third, yes.
Okay.
And what, that was for the legislative day?
Day in the legislature, yes.
Which we're just spending the day on the fourth.
We are going up for committee weeks, yes. FSBA has their day in the legislature in January.
No, I know, but what, Ms., what, you were just talking about November?
No, I was to respond by November.
Oh, for January. Sorry, I heard November third, and I'm like, oh, okay. Sorry.
Got it. Okay, good. Anything else, Mrs.?
No matter.
Okay, thank you. All right, Dr. Brewer?
Um, I only have one comment to make. We had, um, Mr. Ayers led the technical working group yesterday. We had a very productive meeting, and, um, it was really nice. It was my first meeting attending, and it was nice to see how much data that the JB Pro team was able to present. And, um, what I also learned is we actually, they turned that data over to the different, um, groups. So the county receives it, Bellevue receives it, and so then they can do as what, you know, as they wish with that data. So it's really, it's going to help all parties, and so it was a great meeting. Um, but I just really appreciate, Tracy is the chair of that meeting, she was voted back in as chair, and Mr. Ayers as the vice chair. So it was a great meeting.
It was. Thank you, Dr. Brewer. Dr. Campbell?
Uh, I don't have anything other than I'll just say, yes, I, I think we've said publicly a few times, uh, grateful that the school district on our dime is taking care of, making sure that all of the municipalities have all the data sharing that they need, so that all of the permitting and, um, things that have happened separately for years now have some consolidation mechanisms in place based on what we've paid for. So I'm glad it's going to help us all, but thanks to the school board. And I think that'll be all I'll say today.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Dr. James?
Thank you, um, I feel like we've had a pretty extensive day. I will just say, my door is open, figuratively. My email, my phone is available. I texted Ms. Lapira and said if she wants me to come tomorrow to just take the hits from the firing squad, I'm more than available to do that. I understand that there's, I'm already getting it, apprehension, and I, I am an open book, and I'm willing to have any conversation, um, that is solution-oriented. So I'm available, uh, understand that the next few weeks are going to be full of conversation, and I am prepared for that, so that's all I'll add for the moment.
Thank you, Dr. James. Ms. Thrower?
Thank you, and I really don't have, uh, much else to add. We've gone through a lot today. I think that, uh, we are well on the track of globally assessing and making some really important decisions, uh, that will have some really good financial impact to the positive while minimizing, uh, you know, uh, any negativity that, that we can foresee. And I continue to just be really grateful to have these conversations and that I am also, you know, prepared, whenever you look at changing anything, there's going to be some apprehension, but I, I hope what the major takeaway from today's meeting that people will see is that we're here to solve problems and mitigate creating any new ones as a result of those decisions. So keep the faith, people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thrower, and I don't, I don't have much to, to add either. We've had a lot of conversation today, good conversation. Um, and I will just tag-team a little bit with what Dr. Brewer said, a technical working group. It was one of the best, um, meetings I've attended and actually felt that there was some gratitude in the, in the room yesterday, which is, um, just to be honest, a first. And so I, I was really grateful, uh, to be able to be at the table. Um, Dr. Brewer, I'm thankful for your leadership, um, and thankful that things are moving forward. So we'll just leave it at that. All right, and with that, board?
One more thing.
Yes.
Um, I was just checking my scheduling, and the thing that I neglected to mention is that an attorney-client session by law must be held during an, um, a recess from a work session.
Okay.
Because of that, we can't start it until that's, that was why I always schedule them for nine oh-two.
She kind of whispered that over, but I, I didn't catch it.
So, yes, so we will have to start at nine o'clock unless we readadvertise the work session to start earlier.
All right, thank you for the clarification. All right, and with that, board, there are going to be no further business. We'll adjourn at two nineteen? Thank you.